If he ain't your president, we'll impeach him.
Right, right.
Where'd you go?
Who is that? You weren't here last time, were you? You were?
We'll call this meeting to order. Welcome. Entertain agenda adoption. I'm aware of any changes this evening unless you guys have something. We got a motion on the floor?
Second.
Properly seconded, all in favor say aye. Motion carries. Our invocation today by Councilwoman Conrad.
Let us pray. Gracious heavenly father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the rain. Thank you for the many blessings you've given us this day. The many things you give us, remind us of your love for us. Help us remember that you instituted us as stewards of this town to make decisions for this town based on your will. As we meet tonight, be our god. God our hearts to make fair choices. God our minds to make wise decisions. And goddess as we speak, that we speak words of truth. We pray for patience, patience with each other. Pray for a successful and productive meeting. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any members of the cultural committee here today? If you guys can come up front, anybody from the cultural committee? One of you? That's all we got, one. So you're the lucky person.
So I guess it was a couple of weeks ago, we had a cultural festival, first one in Harrisburg. We had approximately 23 countries represented there. It was a great event for anybody who had to go, you had to visit 20-plus countries in one day right here in their own backyard. It really showed the diversity that exists within our community and the fact that we're actually embracing and leveraging it to teach others about the different cultures. So we wrote a proclamation here in honor of the folks that worked tirelessly from us to here to put that together. Whereas the town of Harrisburg recognizes the multicultural festival core team and the Harrisburg Arts and Cultural Heritage Committee for their outstanding work and commitment to organizing the first Harrisburg multicultural festival in order to give citizens opportunity to learn about the cultures and origins that exist in our community. And whereas we believe the multicultural festival has not only helped foster a better understanding of the multitude of backgrounds that exist in our town, but the event gave visitors a chance to learn about a range of countries and cultures and an opportunity to enjoy performances including singing and dancing as well as a mixture of food representing different cuisines from different countries. And whereas Jeet Chandra, Jeet, Jeet, prior now, a member of the town of Harrisburg Arts and Cultural Heritage Committee, took the lead to form the multicultural festival core team to organize and plan the event in an effort to teach not only his children, but the youth of Harrisburg about their own rich and vibrant cultures as well as the cultures of others. And whereas the multicultural festival core team worked for over 14 months to recruit volunteers, vendors, and performers to participate in the event, execute a festival that represented over 30 countries in order to provide a unique experience to patrons of the event, especially the youth, for providing the community an opportunity to join together. And therefore, I seek the shout out to Mayor of the town of Harrisburg to hereby recognize Harrisburg multicultural festival core team, the Arts, Cultural, and Heritage Committee, and the volunteers for the efforts in planning the first Harrisburg multicultural festival.
So we have a proclamation, a resolution actually to read. I'm going to read it and then I'm going to ask for a motion to approve from council for the next two items on the agenda. The first one is for Gerald Nichols, if anybody's aware who Gerald Nichols was. And I'll read who he was. Obviously, he was a member of town council years ago, served for a long time. Passed away like about two months ago, July. So we're going to recognize him today for what he's done in our community. Whereas Gerald Edwin Nichols was born December 16th, 1933 in Mecklenburg County to the late Lester and William Nichols. And whereas Gerald served the United States Army and then worked for Bank of America where he retired after more than 30 years. And whereas Gerald also served his community by humbly devoting his time to various civic organizations, including Franklin's Park and the Lions Club. And where Gerald served on the Harrisburg Town Council for many years beginning in 1975, he was elected to seven terms and appointed to fill terms twice before leaving council in 1999. Following his time as a town council member, Gerald served on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for many years. Whereas Gerald loved traveling, camping, surf fishing, and spending time with his family, especially his wife of 59 years, Phyllis. And whereas Gerald Nichols passed away on Thursday, July 18th, 2019, now therefore being resolved by the Harrisburg Town Council and meeting duly assembled and authority thereof that would proudly honor the late Gerald Edwin Nichols for his dedication and commitment to the town of Harrisburg.
What a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion on the floor?
Second.
Properly seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have another one, another passing of somebody that was special to Harrisburg. If Penny's son can come up here?
I'm going to read another resolution for Penny Enes Vaughn. Penny Enes Vaughn was born November 7th, 1957 in Brooklyn, New York to Georgia and Gladys Vaughn. And whereas Penny's early education, high school and college took place in New York and she worked for many years at bank firms on Wall Street. And whereas in 1998 Penny accepted a position with First Union National Bank in Charlotte in the New Chappell Court of North Carolina where she remained a bank officer at First Union, transitioned to Ocoee and finally to Wells Fargo. Whereas Penny served as a treasurer for the local Cub Scout Pack and on the committee of several organizations, including the Harrisburg Arts and Cultural Heritage Committee. And whereas Penny was the proud owner of Penny's sweets at LLC and sold her baked goods, including her famous pound of cakes and brownies at various events, including the Harrisburg Art Club. And whereas Penny was a social spirit, she loved people and first and foremost, she loved her family. Her children and grandchildren were her entire world and she took love and care of her mother. Banking was her passion. She also loved shopping at yard sales and traveling and decorating. And whereas Penny passed away September 17th, 2019, now therefore being resolved by the Harrisburg Town Council and meeting duly assembled and by the authority thereof. And we proudly honor the late Penny Enes Vaughn for her dedication and commitment to the town of Harrisburg.
I'll let you take the motion.
So see?
Got a motion on the floor? Properly seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we're going to move to public comment. I think I have a sign up sheet. So we'll start with who's on the sign up sheet and then we'll go just general. This is just for general conversation or comments to the town council not associated with the public hearings. And actually, there aren't any either. These are just public hearings. Oh, here we go. I got you. All right, we're going to go down the list. All right, I'm having trouble reading handwriting, so we'll go with who lives at 3751 Ayrshire Court, Harrisburg. Sorry. You can state your name and address for the record.
My name is George Brun. I live at 3751 Ayrshire Court, Harrisburg, in Stallings Farm. Understanding that this was not a public hearing, but it is under the new business, I have two items. Number one, I don't know how many people are enamored with the name Harmony Acres, but whatever. It doesn't sit with me. It sounds like some TV program that's on a reality basis, but could have thought there would be a better name. More importantly, seeing that this is on the agenda for later in the new business, this is an item that Rodney Dellinger and I brought up to town council months and months and months ago when this subdivision was being considered. And that is that lots 30 to 49 in Stallings Farm Phase III, including my home, including Rodney's, including a number of these other people, we were deeded the property that Mr. Nixon wants to give to the town for green space. There are 20 homes that were deeded. We received letters from Mrs. Stallings. She tried to sell that property to Giuseppe Acito in March of 2016. We were all contacted about the fact that we were deeded on this property. I had a meeting of our neighborhood at my house. Subsequently, no one would sign the deed over to Margaret Stallings. She later threatened each one of us with a letter threatening legal action. So here we are today, that Mr. Nixon wants to use that space that 20 homes are deeded on to give to the city. I don't feel comfortable with that. We weren't informed that Farmingdale LLC was giving that property on May of 2019 without anyone asking 20 property owners on Ayrshire Drive about this. It's a subject that we had brought up to council back years, months ago about this issue with the 20 properties that were deeded on this. So at this point, this is an open item with me, and I'm sure it is with 20, 19 other homes on Ayrshire Court that should not, we don't feel, I wouldn't deed it over to Mr. Nixon. If my name's on the deed, no one has given me any notice about this property that he now has his Farmingdale LLC name on. And I'm not happy about it. I don't think anybody else is happy about it. And I don't want to get railroaded. Thanks.
Jan, John, Ruth Fidler, 7188.
Good afternoon, John, Harkel Road, 7188, Ruth Fidler Lane. Also talking about, I'm part of Stallings Farm, want to talk about the Harmony Acres. When that project was coming up, obviously, we knew that there was going to be deeded homes back there or homes going to be built back there potentially when we moved in. But when the request was really originally talked about, it was talked about that there would be a very comparable neighborhood than what Stallings Farms would be. So that there would be half acre lots, it would be all brick, no high density. There would be neighborhood separations, et cetera. Quite frankly, I'm to the point where I know that this is going to most likely go forward. I get that that progress has to happen. Right side of opportunity, I get that from a Harrisburg standpoint. But one of the things that I know that when I'm, my wife and I moved to Harrisburg is looking at their vision and values, and I'm sure you're very familiar with those, but a couple of them. Harrisburg will be the best small town in North Carolina based on low density housing, excellent economic opportunities, a safe living environment, efficient and effective municipal services. And of the visions, vision number one was we value our identity as a small town and believe that everything possible should be done to maintain the identity even as we, even as our population grows. And number four, our appeal as a small town is based partly on natural beauty in the history of the area, which requires us to engage our citizens in a continuous program of preserving and enhancing the beauty and preserving our historical assets. So focus there is preserving and enhancing the beauty. I can tell you that where we are on Ruth Fidler Lane, we look out, my wife and I drink coffee, looking at a beautiful field, seeing the mist come up in the morning, see deer in the evenings as we have dinner out there. What our concern is, is that being that there's not a natural barrier that the developer is going to put in, some sort of a berm, that our beauty that we're accustomed to is now going to be the backside of somebody's shed or their kid's trampoline, a dog lot, et cetera. So what we would like to request is that there be a berm or some sort of natural evergreen breakage between the neighborhoods that the builder would be putting in. So that it's not something that the homeowners are having to put in. Because I can say that myself and my neighbors have looked at that. It's going to be thousands of dollars apiece that we would be required to pay so that we're not seeing somebody else's backside of what is not a comparable neighborhood. So again, thinking about the enhancing and preserving, enhancing the beauty of our core values, you know, the ask would be that you as our council, when you are voting, that you're keeping that in mind and specifically thinking about how we can preserve and enhance that beauty. Thank you.
Paula?
Paul Farre, 7158 Ruth Fidler Drive. I've just, like the speaker said before, just before me, we would like at least some trees or barriers or set our backyard. We don't, we would be looking at everybody's backyard on that back line. And we certainly would like to have some kind of barrier as promised. At one of the first meetings, we said, how about barriers? And they said, well, we'll talk with each individual owner and see what we can work out. Well, so far, nobody's talked to me or anybody else I know of in that area. So as he said, I don't think we're going to stop this, even though yesterday I had a couple come by from Tennessee that said, we'd love to live here, but how about that field back there? And I said, well, it's gone or practically gone. And they said, well, we forget that. We're not going in that neighborhood. And that's what you're going to do to all of us is we want to move out and sell. You're not going to let us do it.
Michael Painter?
Michael Painter, 3630 Charley Lane. I know I've requested a couple of times and just worried about the safety of the children in Stallings Farms as it being a cut through road. I don't know if the neighborhood was required to do a safety study for Stallings Farms. Just curious as being a cut through road with not having a sidewalk and lots of kids walking there with many bus stops, what items they're going to do to continue to have a safe environment for our neighborhood? I think that that is going to be jeopardized and changed with the addition of cars that will be cutting through on our road and what considerations that development has done for our neighborhood. I don't know if that's been considered. And just worried about the amount of traffic that's going to come through our neighborhood with our children. So if you guys could comment on that when it gets down to the open business as to what you guys have done for the safety of our community. Thank you.
Ian Patrick?
Good evening. Ian Patrick, 5701 Manchester Avenue. I didn't come to speak about the Stallings Road, although I was looking at the map. And I think perhaps in our UDO for future projects, because as far as I can tell, this is happening, maybe we could up our heritage tree save and for trees over, I don't know, 12-inch caliper that are hardwoods, we could save those. Something to think about with the new sustainability committee. What I did want to question is this change order that we're doing to the park? I can't tell what it's for or what we're getting for it. Maybe Sushil or Haynes knows? It looks like we're adding money to the project, but we haven't decided what we're getting for it?
We can cover it later in the meeting, but essentially, we were awarded a $350,000 grant that's applied to the park project. And so we're only increasing the budget amount by that $350,000 so that we can use those funds to enhance the existing amenities that we have as part of the project.
So what are we adding for the contract to do?
We're not adding anything, just adding, we're enhancing what we already have planned. So we're in areas where we cut back on expenses just to save money on the project. We're now able to move forward with some of those things.
Is this the full change order?
The full change order is there for the $350,000. So all it is, is moving the money into the GMP so that we can access those funds for those enhancements when we get to that point.
Okay, but typically, when you execute a change order for a contractor...
I didn't intend to get in the back and forth with you, so I'll try to answer your questions later or offline.
Okay, I, please don't vote for that. We're putting the cart before the horse on that one. See what you're getting first and then sign the paper.
Jennifer Teague?
Good evening. Jennifer Teague, 7132 Beavine Lane in Harrisburg. I'm also part of the Stallings Farm and just wanted to make a comment about the Harmony Acres. I actually emailed each of you, but it was the wee hour of three this afternoon as I got some information together. But just the highlight reel, I think there are 12 adjacent lots that butt up to this new development. And I think it would go a long way in order to help preserve the disruption in our neighborhood as well as maintain a pretty large tree line behind two of those lots if there was some implementation of a consistent buffer along those 12 lots. I know when the Howie property came before, there was a whole lot of discussion about burns and landscaping to kind of make that, that work. And I think there was a 50-foot that was discussed at some point. I think a 50-foot buffer for those 12 lots that we're dealing with would really go a long way to help preserve some of what's there. I know someone already spoke about the land in lieu of the two parcels across from Stallings Farm. I was part of the original phase there. And I will tell you that when we purchased our home, there was supposed to be green space land across from us. And as it went, those lots got developed and the two parcels that are now in, being discussed for this new development, that was actually labeled for Stallings Farm green space. And it wasn't really usable space. There was no safe way to get our families across the street there to use it. There was no place to park, so it really was never any usable space. And my concern is if now we have Harmony Acres also designating that as open green space, we've got two adjacent communities that effectively have no real common space to walk to or connect to safely without having to go across Stallings Road. So I just ask that when you guys are reviewing those plots, that you kind of consider some of those things such as the berms and the buffers and maybe look at this open space and decide, is that really benefiting the developer? Is that benefiting the two communities at large? Thank you.
Chris?
My concern today is about our security in our neighborhoods. I'm Christine Wilson, Hayne. I live at 411 Lakeview Drive. I have been in contact with the Speedway who has tried to work with me on the hunting that is going on behind our property. I have gotten copies of ordinances from you. I'm waiting on the ones from the Cabarrus County. I have, last year, they put up signs. This year, they put up four. You have a bad problem back there on the Speedway property and I want something done about it before somebody gets hurt. We hear gunshots back there. I know that no one is supposed to be back there hunting. They are supposed to be carrying a written permission from the Speedway, which I know for a fact that the Speedway has informed me that no one is supposed to be back there. And I would like you all to get involved. I have gone as far as I can with the Speedway. I'm looking forward to helping you help us keep our neighborhood safe. And I would hate to have to take it further, but it's getting to the point where it's scary. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address council this time?
Bryce Scoble, 6434 Farm Mill Road. I'm back up here to talk about something I hoped I would not have to come back up here and talk about, and that is bullying. Bullying has become such a huge problem in our schools and I am astounded to see it happen on our council. I have personally witnessed bullying during meetings. I am aware of bullying of residents, including myself. Now, I was told I am unable to give any names in this forum for fear of being walked out by the sheriff. The concern I have as part two of this comment, we residents to speak to all of you together in one place without emails and multiple phone calls. This is our forum, Public Comments. And I've sat many months before medical problems allowed me not to attend, listening to you and so desperately wanting to make a comment in some of the agenda items, but not being able to because that was not available to me. So the two things that I ask, whether it's of this council or the council that happens after the election, are to give us a forum outside of this public comments where if we feel as residents, you are not doing what we elected you to do or we feel you're doing a fantastic job and we want to say thank you from the bottom of our hearts for standing up for us, we have the ability to do that. And the other part is, I would like to see something in writing, enforceable around bullying. Because as it stands now, the only outlet I have to call it out is the news, the Independent Tribune, and social media. I should not have to go to any of those places to call any of you out for not doing your job, which is what we elected you to do. We may not always agree, and I doubt we always will, but I love to think you're at least listening to us. And if we say something or do something or lead a movement that you may not agree with, that you don't bully us or threatening us for doing what we feel is right. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address council?
I'll let you go real quick. Rodney Dellinger, 3713 Ayrshire Court. There's three things on the Stallings Road project, the Nixon project. One is, I think a lot of us remember a discussion of a buffer, of a barrier between the two neighborhoods. And I think if Mr. Nixon will look back, he'll remember that there was that discussion. There'll be two homes particular that their side, front of their home will be butted up to backyards without a buffer. Now, I don't think anybody here would enjoy that, looking out the side of their front door and into someone else's backyard. Another thing is, the BMP is still in 100-year floodplain. And I did read the thing that said that yes, the floodplains have been changed. And I remember that very well in a town council meeting, but yet the BMP is still in 100-year floodplain. And I know I'm not an engineer, but I don't get how that's really going to work. Third thing is, I've heard through rumor, it's only a rumor, and so hopefully you'll, you'll address it when you get to the final plat, that WASAP, that the sewage down Stallings Road is at capacity now. So I would like to know specifically what percentage that is and what's going to happen. Will we now put 349 more homes with Camellia Gardens and Harmony Acres on there? Thank you.
My name is Patsy Marsh. I live at 7181 Ruth Fidler Drive. When, we had just purchased our house in November. When our realtor, we were looking at it, we said to her, we want to know what kind of houses are going to be built over there. So she called up the builder. The builder did say that it was going to be party plank, so we knew the brick wasn't going to be there as we were told originally. But he did say that the lots were going to be a half an acre size, first couple of lots behind the houses. As it turns out, I understand they're not going to be a half an acre. And I don't know how that could change from October, when we checked on it, to now. And I think that somebody is not telling the truth. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address council? And here and done, we'll move forward.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I don't remember your name, sir. I did not catch it, the first gentleman that spoke. Okay. Can you give me your address? I was trying to look at the property histories as to what you were saying about the deeds. And based on what I'm looking at online, I don't see any record of a deed transfer to you guys, so. And I apologize, I'm just trying to look. Do you have? Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Do we want to comment on that now or do we want to wait until the plat, just to clear?
Wait, I think we'll just address all of the questions and concerns that...
All right, so we'll do that during, during the new business. All right, we'll move to consent agenda. We got a motion on the floor, properly seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion carries.
All right, Mayor and Council, just a quick update on several items coming up on our calendar over the next month, month and a half. Late October and early November are going to be pretty busy for us. I wanted to take the chance to share with the public things that we have going on. We are beginning a transportation plan for the town, so the town's hired a traffic engineer to come in and assist with studying the existing conditions of the transportation corridors throughout town, as well as offer some plans and some suggestions for future development, future corridor connections that could assist us. And so that's going to be a public process, so we'll have multiple public meetings as part of that. And we encourage everyone who is interested in that to attend. Our first meeting is set for October 24th, so it's coming up in just a couple of weeks. And we'll get more information out on our website and via social media about the details regarding that. But I would encourage anyone who's interested in that to attend. Also, our Parks and Recreation Department is hosting a trick-or-treat in Town Center on October 25th. That event begins at 5:30, just the Halloween festivities for our community. Also, on that day, there will be a groundbreaking ceremony for the Farmington Mixed Use Center that's being constructed at 485 and Rocky River Road. That will be held on October 25th as well. Then following that, we have the grand opening of our Veterans Park. So our Veterans Park ceremony will take place on Veterans Day, which is November 11th. That ceremony will start at 11:00 a.m. in the new Veterans Park that's being constructed there in the Harris Square Shopping Center, where the Publix Grocery Store is. Also, I want to take the time, if there's any business owners in the audience, or anyone interested in opening a business in town, the town has a facade grant improvement policy and initiative that businesses can take advantage of. Essentially, any business along Highway 49 has the opportunity to apply for grant dollars from the town to assist in upgrading or enhancing their sign, so, or the facade of their facility. So we're doing that as a beautification project along Highway 49, and we just want to make sure that the public is aware of that. And anyone interested in it should either seek out staff's information, we'll be glad to provide that to you. And I want to turn it over to our Assistant Town Manager for a quick finance update.
Good evening. I'll try to make this quick. So first off, want to kind of go through the revenue expense dashboard. So as you can see, we're in pretty good shape with, as we go through our expenditures. The revenues, as we've been talking the last few months with the tax collections, have just now beginning to come in. That number has begun to increase, but it's still behind pace for the year. So as we continue to get that money in, that'll go up. And then you'll see in our department expenditures, council currently is in the red. And again, this is an item that we've been talking over the last few months with some annual dues that came up at the beginning of the year. That shoved that number high, but as the the year progresses, that'll level out. And then the rest of our expenditures for all the other departments are continuing to look good. As you can see, Parks and Recreation, that had been trending in the red for a couple of months with the July 4th. As the year has progressed on with that, that has leveled out as well. Salaries to date, you can see those are, as we have some positions that were mid-year hires, that is leading to some of that reason why those salaries are under budget at that level right now. So going into our project dashboard, kind of like what we did last month, I'll take you through each of these and talk about some highlighted areas. The HVAC replacement with Station 3, we're continuing to have that priced out. We did have it designed, and the first quote that we got was higher than what our budget was. So we're going out and looking at some additional quotes to see if we can get a better price for that. And we'll definitely be bringing back the results with you for that one. And then the branded facility signage, those are all the new signs at Fire Stations 1 and 3 in the parks. So the only two things we have left to do with those is to get electricity run so we can have them illuminated and get the landscaping in. We are currently waiting to get some quotes from electricians to be able to do that work. That'll be the initial part with the the lighting, and then we'll be able to lay in the landscaping. Of course, with the hot weather right now, we're not really planning on putting that landscaping in until probably November, December timeframe, so once it cools down some more. This is the first part of the facilities, infrastructure, and improvements for the multi-year projects. So you'll see, we have some of the highlighted areas with the transportation bonds. So we are moving forward, as mentioned, on some of those projects. The sidewalks, we have both the sidewalks under the transportation bonds and the sidewalk money that we have previously put aside for CMAC that we're pulling out of that and doing it directly to try to maximize our dollar usage with that. So those projects are in design, and hopefully they'll be designed between now and January, and we'll be able to get those laid down in the spring. And then you'll see the intersection improvements with the bonds. So our Caldwell Road extension design, that's going to be going, coming back to council in December, is currently in the RFQ process. And then the Caldwell and Tom Query design, again, that's currently in the RFQ process, and we'll be bringing it back to council in December for consideration there. And the stormwater system, we just had our community meeting about that a couple of weeks ago, and we are finalizing the design on that. And hopefully, that design will be completed in December, and we'll be able to go to construction in March. And then for the rest of these multi-year projects, you'll see some projects that are in construction. The street resurfacing, both for the transportation bonds that we were doing this year, as well as the Powell Bill resurfacing are all underway, and hopefully we'll be finished with those in December. Fire Station Number 2, one of the outstanding items that we're still working on that is the traffic signal that will go out there for the caution light whenever we have the fire trucks come out. Those, we're waiting for DOT's final approval on those. Everything's ready to go, and hopefully within a week or two after we get final approval with DOT. We have gotten verbal approval, we're just waiting for the formal final approval, and we'll be able to get those installed. And we already mentioned about Veterans Plaza Development, still on track for Veterans Day opening, so we're good there. The equipment projects that we have going on, obviously, we have a lot. You can see a lot. At the bottom part of that is shown as complete, so we're moving along with a lot of projects. Our emergency generator is one of the items that we've been working on. There was some delay in the utilities for the installation of that because it's a gas-powered generator. So once we we actually have that ordered, and we're hoping to have that in place in the next month or two. And the Camstrup AMI collector set, we have that installed already, so that should be good to go, and that will provide our, create our ability to be able to read some of those AMI meters on this side of town, because the antenna was put up in this area. And then the station alerting equipment, that's an ongoing project with Concord and with the dispatch services. There's some additional discussions that are, meetings are being had, some discussions that the Fire Department will have with council as we move forward in that project, so we'll keep you posted on that. The vehicle projects, the three I just wanted to highlight there, those, I wanted to highlight those particularly because the target completion date was September 30th, and those have not been finished yet. We should be getting those in. All three have been ordered and should be coming in this month. We'll have to add some equipment on them, and then after that we'll be able to put them in service. So with any luck, we'll have that going on in the next couple of months. Then the professional services, two that we are really pushing right now, the law enforcement feasibility study, that is currently underway, and we're hoping to continue to have that delivery date of January of 2020. And then the transportation plan, as Haines just mentioned, October 24th will be the first community meeting, and we'll have some council input on that project. And right now, it's still on track to be released in April. And a few other items just wanted to mention, the audit field works complete, as well as the financial statement drafting. That's all over to the auditors now, so we're just waiting for the final word on any last changes, and we'll get that over to the LGC. The financing for Harrisburg Park, Phase 1, and the elevated water storage tank, both closed on September 24th, no issue. So we're moving forward with the financing point now with that. And then the planning is continued for the first issue of the transportation bonds. We are gearing up for those in the spring, so we'll be coming back to you at that time with the details of that. Also, wanted to just touch base on our purchasing committee. They're continuing to be very busy, making some good headway on our vendor list. Obviously, as we've mentioned, that is their main category, or main focus right now. So the preferred vendors that we have established already now are hardware supplies, automotive supplies, water delivery and office supplies. So we have that all in place, so we have a primary and a secondary vendor for each of those services. That'll be the take that we'll do with all of our vendors. You can see down there that we are working on RFPs for electrical services and HVAC work, and those are the days that we plan to try to have those together for and be able to start using those shortly after we have those identified. And then all the other preferred vendors are going to be evaluated over the next 12 to 18 months. And hopefully, once we get all that done, we'll have that as an easy reference for every person that makes purchases throughout town to be able to have access to that. And that's all I have. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
The sidewalk plan, it's out on the Pro CMAC sidewalks. Is this the final list, the blue that's on here, that's going to be dropped, the sidewalks that are going to get put in as a result of everything that you just discussed earlier?
I believe so.
So will we notify neighbors that where it's going to cross behind their house, just to let them know? I mean, how do we normally handle that?
We can certainly put something out as we get.
Sure, they're going to want to know when the sidewalk happens to go behind their house. And there are several sections, obviously, it looks like it's definitely going to cross behind yards, that probably didn't know that's going to happen. So if we can over-communicate that.
We'll make sure we do that.
Yeah, we'll get some maps out. We're really trying to do, especially for these transportation bond projects, a lot of communication out to let everybody know what we're doing and when we're doing it. So we'll make sure we notify everybody with that.
Is that it for you, Haines?
Yes, sir.
All right, Rob, four-way stop sign Caldwell. We've been talking about this for, I think, years.
Feels like years. It's been months, but the the last update we have on this is that DOT, obviously, is still going through their budget scenario, so they're not going to pay for it. We've authorized our payment for it, so we're just waiting on location survey. So as soon as we get location survey to install it, our stuff's in, we're ready to go.
So do we have any idea on the ETA on that?
Their their estimate to me was a couple of weeks, a couple of weeks ago, so.
So I mean, literally, it's not like you can put them too many different places on the.
Well, it's the stop ahead is the issue. So the stops are easy. We we can push those back. They're 20 feet each direction. What DOT is requiring is the new warning stop-ahead signs, and those are their standards. So we don't have any standards to lay those out internally, or we would. But they have certain offset requirements based on the horizontal curvature, and until their traffic engineer will do that work. And to his defense, they're not blowing us off. It's mostly, they have really high priority projects that they're backed up on, and he's just telling me it's in his queue. So we we reach out to him weekly. You reach out to me, and then I reach out to them, and I get the same response. But we'll we'll continue on them. I would anticipate it to be imminent. I hope next month at the same meeting. I'm not saying it's going to be imminent again, but that's the status.
Got it. Thank you. So we've had several sustainability committee meetings, and I took note of the tree ordinance that we currently have, and looked at the calipers again and go back. So one of our objectives is obviously to definitely look at our current ordinances to try to align some of the more green and sustainable ordinances back into ours, and leveraging a lot of what's already been done in North Carolina. So that's kind of underway. We've got some folks looking at that. One thing that was brought up is, and I'll just ask you guys, if I can get the the electric bills for Fire Station 3 and the Public Works Building, because both of those are situated such that solar panels would actually work. Now, we would do obviously cost analysis to make sure that it makes even financial sense, but we need a year's worth of electric bills to better do the analysis on that, so if we can get that. Something else that came up is Charlotte has a Charlotte Green Crown program that they leverage. It's a volunteer program for restaurants, and we can probably expand past that. And I think we're going to actually start that in Harrisburg, and that's just promoting some green characteristics of a restaurant, whether it's recyclable, get away from styrofoam, get rid of straws and that kind of thing, and actually provide them with like a shade of green sticker that they could leverage on their on their buildings and will advertise them on our site. So we're going to probably build something similar to what Charlotte's already doing to start to promote that within our community. And obviously, from you guys in the audience, is we're looking for any ideas that you may have that from a sustainability, energy, conservation, anything that you want, please send it to us. We've got a group of about 10 people now that's off looking at what other communities are doing. And obviously, the California areas are bigger in this than we are, and we're trying to, you know, slowly get our legs underneath us and move forward. We're hopeful that ordinances, we can kind of align to the current efforts underway right now with our ordinances and be able to leverage, putting some good stuff in there on that. And then we're going to probably connect with HBA and start leveraging that avenue in order to promote our new, well, we don't know what it's called yet. We'll call it a Shade of Green for Harrisburg Restaurants and Businesses. So lots of good stuff. LED light poles, I know we talked about swapping out or start moving away from from the condensing bulbs to LEDs. Where are we? And we looked at possible opportunities on that. Do we have any more on that?
We haven't gone too far on that, so we talk with the developers anytime they're coming through new areas and have the opportunity to replace or install street poles. It's an opportunity for them to look at, but it's really about a lease arrangement with Duke Energy in most cases. So we can look into that a little bit further.
And then lastly, bottle filling stations, and I did get a good conversation with Daniel, to make sure that the parks have a filling station as opposed to just a water fountain, so people can bring their own bottles in and not have to further bring in more plastic. So lots of good stuff happening there and some some good energy around that, so.
I'll go to council for their comments.
I've got a comment, not concern, but I do have two questions for you, Haines. But I'll share something that I would have never in a thousand years thought would have happened. And I wanted to commend our PIO, David Bradshaw. I think, is David?
Yeah, David, yeah, that's right. David Bradshaw for the Fire Department, correct.
So Friday afternoon, I guess it was about 5:30 in the afternoon, a cryptic message comes out in social media, and it's a resident that some of us in this room know very well. And the message was very disturbing. I didn't know where to go with it. And I was very bothered. Christopher and I chatted briefly on it, reached out to a couple others, and suddenly I'm like, David Bradshaw, this guy knows everything. He's always out there. And at a moment's notice, he jumped into it and was able to help us kind of spearhead where we were at. The good thing is, it worked out to the benefit. It was a sad cry for help, unfortunately, but there was no danger for that individual. But it was nice to be able just to go, hey, David, can you help me? And in a moment, he was absolutely on board and helped us. And, you know, he kind of reassured me. He's like, okay, here's what I can tell you on calls that are going on right now. There's nothing that, you know, pertaining to something like that. So I just want to extend a big thank you for his efforts. As I said, Councilman Barfield was involved. I thank him as well for his reassurance in that situation.
Absolutely. And to Councilman Smith's point, thank you for the communication we had around that, that we're able to help a little bit.
The two questions that I had, one was, I know we just recently put in the sign at Stallings Road, it's already missing a letter.
The park, the P, the P's gone.
Yeah, we don't have a letter.
Did somebody borrow that, or was it fallen out?
So, you know, I'm concerned that if it's that new, we're already missing a letter. We may want to go back to the manufacturer.
Yeah, absolutely.
The other question was, you had toyed around with the idea, fact or fiction, rumor or real, where are we on that?
Yeah, so we are days away from launching that on our website, and what Councilmember Smith is referring to is part of the town's website, we're going to create what we refer to as a fact or fiction button. So, a lot of rumors get talked about within the community, a lot of things pop up, especially on social media, and it's hard for folks to digest and really understand, is it valid? Is it true? What's going on? And it's tough for us, from a town perspective, to get involved on social media platforms, especially that aren't run by the town. So, you never see us out there responding or commenting on things, and people often refer to the other sites other than the towns, which is totally fine. We support those efforts. But what we want to make sure of is that the accurate information is out there and available to our residents. So, we're launching this fact or fiction button that when we see or hear of rumors, if residents call in and ask a question, it's like, okay, that's something worthy of us putting out a response to. Or we see something on social media that we know is inaccurate. We're going to use that fact or fiction button to help push out accurate information from the town's perspective, so that the public has that resource to go to and is not relying on hearsay or second or third-hand information. And so, we hope, we're going to use it as a bit of a satire piece as well to sort of make it humorous. There's not going to be a lot of information in detail associated with the responses. It's going to be a, hey, is a Bojangles being built on 49, and we're going to comment sort of yes or no in that regard. Or, I hear this about this, or this about that. We're just going to make brief comments about yes or no, fact or fiction, and we're going to do that in hopes that it will spur residents to seek out that information in other areas or contact the town if they're interested in learning a little bit more. So, we hope to launch that very soon, and we hope that the residents enjoy that as another way for us to communicate to you guys.
Thank you.
And Mayor, Council, I'd like to recognize our staff on a great job that they did for the art walk this weekend and the Rockin' the Bird concert series, given the parameters that they were given and the land use that they were given. Also, I'd like to recognize the Art Heritage and Cultural Committee for also putting on a great event, given the circumstances that they had.
So, I wanted to make sure that everyone knew, the youth council is meeting next Tuesday, October 22nd, from 6:30 until 7:45 here in council chambers. We'll be having a tobacco treatment specialist come and talk to the kids about vaping and other ways to treat smoking, and we're looking for additional members. So, if you have a child ages 13 to 18, is a member of a Cabarrus County school, is absolutely maintaining a B average in school, we want to see them here on next Tuesday, the 22nd, at 6:30.
Haynes, I think you said it during the last meeting, but just while we have an audience full of people, the concrete that is being broken up and the Veterans Park issue, can you address that while everybody's here?
Yeah, so, obviously, Veterans Park grand opening is right around the corner. We're just a couple of weeks away from that. Last week and the week before specifically, if you rode by there and paid attention, you probably saw a lot of concrete being removed from that site. The result of that was simply due to the quality of the concrete that was poured by the contractor, and it was not up to our standards, and so, after it cured, we asked the contractor to pull it out and redo it, and the contractor was willing to do that. There was no added expense to the town for that. It was something that we just wanted to make sure that we get the highest quality end product out there, and so, we weren't willing to settle for what was the work that was done. And so, I know that was sort of alarming to folks, but I just want everyone to know, it didn't cost the town any additional monies, it cost the contractor some money, but we're just trying to get that good, solid end product.
And then the last thing, just for clarification, the law enforcement study will be January?
The end date for that is looking at January 2020, correct.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council? On hearing them, we'll move to public hearings. Solicitation ordinance, again.
All right, yeah. So, this is a recessed public hearing from last month's meeting. I've got a PowerPoint presentation that I'll go over that was presented last month. I'll sort of go over a little bit quick tonight since we went over it last month, but... Get it up and running here? All right, we're in business. All right, so, a quick overview of the solicitation ordinance that is proposed and the intent of it. So, really, this kind of came to our attention this past summer, where we fielded several calls from residents related to aggressive solicitors that were coming through their neighborhoods. Those solicitors were rude, they were aggressive, borderline trespassing in some instances, and the town nor our law enforcement officials had the authority to regulate those solicitors because the town nor the county has a solicitation ordinance to address those. The town had previously considered adopting a solicitation ordinance back in 2010, but there was concern at that time about how that ordinance would impact nonprofit organizations, so it was actually never voted on. So, town staff is taking a look at other ordinances that other communities have put in place. We've talked to those community leaders about what works and what does not work for them, and we put a priority around creating an ordinance that give our law enforcement officials the tools that they need to address those aggressive solicitors in those instances. So, the intent of the ordinance is to protect our owners, property owners and businesses from unwanted solicitation. So, this gives both law enforcement and town code enforcement ordinance authority to address those unwanted solicitors when they happen. What we would do is be responsive in our enforcement of this, so it will be complaint-driven, meaning that the town's not going to be out there investigating, you know, every single potential solicitation that could occur, especially in a business environment. We definitely don't want to interfere or affect any current business solicitation practices that are frequent for medical services or other industries that that sort of activity is common, but we do want to respond when we're engaged by residents or businesses to address their concerns. So, the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department locally here has agreed to be the enforcement agency for the town, but again, we also have our code enforcement authority as well that we could utilize. So, overarching language of the ordinance simply just makes it unlawful for any person to enter upon a privately owned premise or business without the permission for the purposes of soliciting sales, orders, goods, wares, merchandise or services without first receiving a permit from the town. So, one thing that was very important for the town is to ensure that we exempted charitable organizations, churches, schools, civic organizations, and even neighborhood associations from performing fundraising, sales, marketing or other activities. So, this was a change from last month. Last month, council members brought up a concern that our language read specifically to the fundraising component of these exempted organizations, and so, we expanded that beyond just fundraising. We included sales, marketing, and really a catch-all in stating other activities of that organization. So, we really are giving broad authority for those types of organizations to continue to solicit and do those efforts that are best for their organization. We have specifics that outline the expectations of the applicant within the permit process. There will be a small fee associated with the permit. It's a $25 fee, and that's good for 12 months. In the past, our last month, excuse me, our ordinance contained language that would require any person seeking a permit with the town to have a bond, basically a surety bond on any of the services or goods that they provided. That sort of was complicated, and some council members felt like that might be overreaching and would prohibit a lot of smaller businesses from taking advantage of soliciting. So, we removed that language in its entirety. So, now, there's currently just an application, a permit fee associated with it, and a list of rules and guidelines that those solicitors are to follow. If they are in violation, or if someone does not seek a permit with the town, they can be charged with a Class III misdemeanor and/or fined up to $150. So, typically, from municipal standpoint, we seek the fine as a way of addressing any sort of code violations that we have. Class III misdemeanor would be a criminal charge that would require the district attorney to be willing to prosecute any offender. We haven't spoken with the district attorney about whether they will or will not. Some will, some won't. That will change with the opinions of the district attorney that serves, which is why we have the municipal authority to seek that fine from those individuals, and that's what we would rely on most. Some additional language would require that the solicitor identify themselves or anyone acting on their behalf while they are out. The town has the opportunity to deny an applicant or revoke a permit if the ordinance is violated while they are out there soliciting, if the best interests of the health and safety of the community is in jeopardy in any way, or if the applicant or any of its associates have been convicted of criminal offenses. This will also protect citizens from being accosted by a solicitor. We even have specific language related to distances from places like financial institutions, ATMs, outdoor dining areas, or public transportation stops, areas where you find solicitation to be most problematic. Our ordinance will account for those areas and restrict it in those areas. So, that's a real high-level overview of the ordinance and some changes that were made since last month, so I will turn it over to the council. We actually opened it up last month for public comment. I think we agreed when we recessed it that we will come back and open it up for public comment again tonight, just to receive any feedback from the public, but that's the ordinance presented to council, so leave it to you, Mayor, for any discussion before you open it up.
Yeah, well, actually, you want me to do that now, and we'll go back to you guys for a discussion, do the public first. All right, we're going to open up this for public comment, and though speaking for or against, we do have a sign-up sheet. Dave Demone, I believe, signed up, so you're welcome to join us, and then anybody after that is welcome to step up to the podium.
Good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor. Dave Demone, I'm a business owner in town, Rocky River Coffee, right here in the town center. We've been serving the community for 15 years, also lived in Harrisburg for over a decade. Also, I am representing Harrisburg Business Alliance. We looked over the ordinance and sent it out to our group, and I also walked into businesses and asked them what they thought of it. And we are overwhelmingly in support of this ordinance. We feel like it's got, the language that was changed was great, it kind of covers both spectrums. Two personal stories, real quick, I'm going to tell you. One is a business owner. About seven years ago, I had a guy come in and tried to sell me a magazine ad, and I said no, a couple of times. We know how salesmen have sale one, sale two, sale three, and then he ended up proceeding to throw the magazine in my face before he walked out of my business. So, that's a perfect example, and this is a true story, of where I can just call the town, give them his name, whatever, you guys can do your due diligence, and then from there, they can figure out what to do with them. From a personal side, about seven years ago, we had a vacuum salesman come to our door, and I wasn't home. And my wife opened the door, and of course, they're super nice, and she let him basically talk his way into the door, not all the way in the house, but enough where we found out later on, what these, some of these companies do is they just want to get in your house to check out the security. Do you have dogs? Do you have cameras? What's the whole scenario? And so, when I tried to track down that company, all of a sudden, couldn't get through to them. So, another case scenario where this ordinance, would I help, you know, in the validity of these businesses to really do some research and find out what these businesses are? So, just from a personal side, resident and business, and, you know, representing Harrisburg Business Alliance, we feel like this ordinance is good, and we love the exempt because some of the business owners that I talked to did have concerns about charities and, you know, your kid's knocking on the door, hey, can we sell a football card and stuff like that? And so, I think it kind of covers both bases, and this will be a big plus from that side. And, you know, in the end, you still get to do business if you want to, you just got to get a permit if you get a complaint against you, so it's not like you're kind of pushed out the door for good. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this ordinance?
10 hours, 4152 Abernathy Place, question, the permit fee that the $25 that was signed to it, is that in line with the other towns, or is this just a number that we picked on that?
It was pretty common that we saw throughout other municipalities. I think the highest one that we saw was $50, and I think the point in the directive that we got was we didn't want it to be cost prohibitive for small businesses to take advantage of it if they did decide to go through the permit process. So, it was just sort of an arbitrary number that we came up with, but it does match sort of industry standard that we saw.
Okay. If the ordinance is adopted by the town council, how can we enforce that? So, posted in our neighborhoods, are we going to have to get a sign to put at the beginning of our neighborhood that says, no soliciting per town, Harrisburg ordinance, blah, 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 is...
No, this will be blanket coverage for any resident or property owner within Harrisburg. So, all you have to do is call the town or call law enforcement, and they'll be able to address it right away.
But to your point, if your neighborhood wanted that sign in the front, you would obviously, you could do that and point to the ordinance that just got passed, or will get, hopefully, get passed, or...
Just in my journeys here the last couple of weeks, going in and out of neighborhoods, it's, a lot of neighborhoods have at the beginning, no soliciting, and then a bunch of houses have it right at their front door also, but if it's at the front of the neighborhood when they come in, then it, because these are revolved, these are people that just come in and out of town, you know, they go, most of these vacuum cleaner salespeople, they only live in Harrisburg, you know, they're from out of town, just rotating through. So, it'd be good to have something that we could reference, kind of like what we did for Kensington Forest Pool. We put a, no trespassing per ordinance, sheriff's department has right of access.
One thing that people need to understand is just because you have a no solicitation sign at the entrance of your community doesn't sort of give you blanket coverage for that. It's more of a suggestion in that standpoint. This ordinance actually gives us that ordinance authority to be able to go in and act on it. Unless a homeowners association or property owner had a pre-arranged agreement with the sheriff's department to act on their behalf to deal with solicitors, most property owners wouldn't be able to have that authority to go in and do anything. This ordinance gives everyone that opportunity, whether you're in an HOA or a subdivision or not.
Yeah, okay. I just think, you know, if we had some at the front also that references town ordinance, that if they come in from out of town, they don't know that town Harrisburg has, you have to get a permit.
Yeah, you're welcome to add that language to your signage.
Okay, very good. I think it'd be beneficial, it would stop some from coming in, rather than us picking the phone up and calling the sheriff's department or the town, you know?
Good point.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? Hearing them, we'll close the public hearing and go to council for consideration.
I have a comment before we go forward.
Okay.
I agree with this in theory. It's pretty broad, and I really would like for it to go before the sheriff and the DA, before we enact it.
Are you putting that in a motion?
I can put that in a motion, Christopher.
But I think you're right, that it needs to be vetted through enforcers of the law in our county right now, and while I know that changes yearly, or every couple of years, or could change, right now, that's who we have that's going to do it, and if it doesn't have teeth, then it's not worth paper, it's written on.
So, it's to my understanding that if it is approved by the DA and the sheriff, it would then be approved by both of you?
I'm good with it.
I would support it if the DA and sheriff...
Then, can we change the motion to motion of approval with contingency, of approval with the mayor, with the sheriff and the DA?
You guys can do whatever you want to, just to speak to that. To speak to that, though, again, on the district attorney piece, again, we likely are not going to seek criminal charges against individuals, but this ordinance gives us municipal fining authority that we typically take advantage of. A good example is, a few months back, the council considered an adjustment to our traffic ordinance that addressed parking on the street, and you gave the sheriff's department ordinance authority to issue citations for folks who park on the street. Now, they also have the criminal authority to do that as well, but no DA is going to charge for that. So, we didn't seek DA approval in that regard. So, Lieutenant Misimer, the head of our Harrisburg Division for the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department, supports this ordinance and has asked for this sort of ordinances and has agreed to implement it on our behalf if we were to seek out the citations, just like we did with the on-street parking. So, that's the due diligence that we've done on our background at this point, and if I had known it was a concern last month or in that time period, I could have sought that information prior to tonight.
Lieutenant, if your deputies are enforcing this particular ordinance in the way it's written, and something was to happen at that point, and arrests needed to be made, would our DA support the probable cause that you had to stop the person to start with? That's my concern.
I believe we deal with the probable cause of what they decided to do.
I believe we deal with probable cause of what they decided to do with respect to the law. Obviously, that's not how well their attorney work of this day. But I have a doubt we have enough PC to just probably...
Okay.
Mr. Comrade, would you like to retract that?
So if, recessing would be more appropriate than adding a crazy double thing in here. So instead of voting for, we would defer another 30 days as we did to get to this point. It'd be a whole lot cleaner than trying to do a double. We'd end up having to vote yes after the validation with the DA and the sheriff.
Thank you for clarification.
So I hadn't heard a motion yet. It's an entertaining motion.
I'll make, I'll make the motion.
What's the motion going to be?
The motion to...
Defer?
Defer.
Or second action.
Till after the sheriff and the DA have looked at it.
We good with that, Rich?
Rich, do you have any timing issues with the public hearing, being that this is a second deferral?
I closed the public hearing, so this would just be decision would occur at the next meeting, as opposed to opening the public hearing at this point.
So for clarification, Haines, you said that you're not looking to do the criminal side of it. If that's not the case, is that needed? I mean, is the DA review needed? I guess that's my confusion.
Yeah, sure. So interestingly enough, in the state of North Carolina, the General Assembly is cracking down heavily on criminal enforcement of municipal ordinances, to the extent that we are now having to report to the state what ordinances we have that have criminal enforcement authority to them. And if we do not have criminal enforcement authority now in any language, we may not ever be able to add it back, or there's going to be at least a two-year prohibition on adding criminal authority. So while we may not use it, it is a very good idea for us to have that language included into the ordinance, so that if anything ever changed in the future, we have the ability to if we wanted to.
So would you be comfortable with the delay, with the deferral?
Sure, I mean, we can, we can remove the criminal piece.
I'm trying to understand with the piece with the DA.
Yep.
How much that is needed, and it sounds like it very much is needed. Correct or incorrect?
Only if we intend to criminally enforce it, which is not what we intend to do on the start, yeah.
And that's what I understood, that's the clarification I'm asking for. You are not looking to criminally enforce this, therefore, you're not needing the DA's review.
Correct.
No. So we got a motion on the floor to defer decision, and properly second. We have any more discussion, because it sounds like half of what we're asking for. The sheriff back there, representative stated that they're okay with this, so...
Yeah, I just want a clarification on, do we truly need the DA involved at this point?
If you want to have enforcement done, or if it needs to be done at some point, then yes. But if not, then...
Well, I think the sheriff has, I mean, the sheriff has the ability to arrest someone, but then the DA is responsible for building a case on probable cause of potential crime.
Well, that's what he does. He investigates it and arrests.
But he's, yeah, but he's going to arrest, but I don't, I don't, I guess I just don't understand why we need to send it to the DA.
Haines, I think Councilman Smith said, if we're not going to prosecute him, why are we...
Why would it need to be deferred?
Right, why are we deferring, right?
It does, well, our intent is not to prosecute criminally.
But what if you have to? That's the other question.
That's correct. If, if he's out there on the call for simply somebody coming out and knocking on doors, and he enforces it, that person at that point becomes belligerent. Is it a legal stop or not? And I think that's where we're going to get into some legality issues of the DA needing to decide, is she going to stand by that stop being a legal stop or not?
Do we go to the president?
He can't tell you that.
So it would change.
It would change. We may tack on for shout-out charges, but we would go for the North Carolina general statute of disorderly conduct.
Chris, have you talked to the sheriff about this?
No.
Okay. That's, that's my point right there.
So we're deferring to speak to the sheriff and not the DA?
I think you go ahead and do it while you got...
I think you go to the DA, too.
I mean, if you got the option, just go ahead and get it cleared.
I don't know if the DA can tell you what he'll do unless I'm bad in crime, unless I'm bad in, so, but I'm good with either way.
All right, so we got a motion on the floor to defer properly second. Any more discussion before I go to vote?
Restate the motion, please.
To reese, not recess.
We're going to defer decision at this public hearing until the next meeting and getting clarity from the sheriff and the DA.
Is 30 days appropriate for the DA? I know...
Yeah, I think we should be able to get an answer from the sheriff and the DA in that time.
In the meantime, the solicitors are running rampant through Harrisburg.
While we are at it, can we see if there's additional language with the RNC coming to town?
That's different.
We don't have any ordinances currently in place about blocking streets.
Yeah, we do not have a picketing ordinance or anything at the moment, correct?
I don't think that would occur here.
I wouldn't add this to that. I'd step forward.
Not necessarily to that, but it's something we need to be aware of.
It would have to be, it would have to be a separate ordinance that we would have to create specific to that issue. So we can certainly look into that if staff's given that direction.
So my last question. If the DA comes back and says no, but the sheriff says yes, where are we at then? I mean, I'm trying to understand where we're going to end up eventually. Does it have to be absolute on both, or is it an absolute on the sheriff?
I guess that becomes our decision at, when we vote again.
I mean, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Where do we gain?
In game, is it an absolute on both?
I would say whatever the sheriff and/or DA says to, to Haines. Because they're going to give him their opinion.
All right, let's, let's go to the vote on the deferral, and if we can get past that, maybe this changes the discussion anyway. How about that? So I'm going to go to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we're deferring the decision for 30 days. All right, next up, the consideration for economic development loan for Town Center project.
All right, mayor and council. So for those in the audience, to give a little background on this, we held a special meeting of the town council on October 2nd to schedule the public hearing for tonight in consideration of this item. This is certainly a unique item for the town to consider, so I want to take the time to walk through the project, the details of it, and then, of course, take any questions from council and the audience. So to give a high-level overview, what we're considering tonight is an economic development incentive related to the Town Center project. We're going to, you're going to hear me say Town Center project throughout the evening. The Town Center project itself is related around 15 acres of vacant and currently unutilized acreage within the town center. The town, for more than a year now, has been actively working with Capital Nexus LLC. Capital Nexus is a local Charlotte-based developer who has interest in bringing a mixed-use project to the town center that matches the vision that the town has carried for the town center for going on 20 years now. So the mixed-use concept that is expected or that is proposed and was detailed in the rezoning application that was approved unanimously by the town council consists of 148,000 square feet of Class A office space, 176,000 square feet of retail or commercial space, a 19,000 square foot cultural arts center, and a 15,000 square foot public green space, as well as 333 residential units. The total investment expected for this mixed-use center is estimated at $150 million. So quite a big tax-based impact, quite a big job impact, quite a big, obviously, development impact to what we have here in Town Center. So this will bring life to what has otherwise been a stalled or underdeveloped Town Center area. It will create a dynamic downtown that the town has sought for many, many years to give that sense of place to the community. From a tax-based perspective, it will generate over a half a million dollars annually in new abhorrent tax revenue. That's not even inclusive of sales tax revenue that would also be of benefit to the town. So here's a real high-level description. This information's been out on the website for quite some time, but you see the site plan there on the left and some visual depictions of what is expected with the Town Center development and its full build-out. So the current status of the project is that Capital Nexus LLC has the property under contract from the existing property owner. There are two LLCs listed for the many parcels associated with Town Center, but they're essentially all controlled by one entity. So Capital Nexus, again, has been under contract for quite some time on that. They expect to close on the property, or the original close date on the property is October 15th. That's tomorrow. It is, it is expected at this time that even with approval or denial of this potential investment opportunity from the town is that that close date would be pushed back just a few days, just to, to figure out what the results of the action tonight are. So unfortunately, Capital Nexus and the property owner have had some disagreement over the financial terms of the closing on that property. They had original contract negotiations worked out. As they worked towards the closing date, some of those details related to the financial portion of that contract changed. Not changed in a manner that affected Capital Nexus in any way. It's not that Capital Nexus has, you know, run into a hard time coming up with the money. They've just been put in a, really a time crunch to be able to come up with the financing necessary to close on the entirety of the project. So the total purchase price for the 15.03 acres here in Town Center is 8.4 million. So far, Capital Nexus has shown the town their ability to bring 5.4 million of that total close price to the table to close. In addition to the 5.4 million, Capital Nexus has already invested roughly a million dollars in deposits on the property and other soft costs associated with engineering, architectural, environmental, and due diligence expenses as they've developed their site plan. The request from Capital Nexus to the town is to assist in funding that $3 million gap that they have on the property acquisition. Again, it's all related due to the timeline of the property coming up quickly and Capital Nexus being unable to go out and seek private financing for that remaining 3 million in a time period that will work for the developer. The developer has also changed sort of the, the plan as well on their timeline on when they can construct, which is another particular issue that Capital Nexus has under the current arrangement, where the current property owner would not allow them to develop on the site until the entirety of the loan is paid off. Well, Capital Nexus is in a position to move forward very quickly, and they want to see activity begin on this project as quick as possible and don't want to wait that time period. The town, as a municipality governed by the state, we have very limited options on how we can participate with private development. Some examples that you may be familiar with are public-private partnerships. We can establish a redevelopment district for a downtown area. We can make grants to private development for public infrastructure improvements. You guys hear all across the state when entities are recruited to the state or to communities about local incentives or local grants or local matches that communities make. We can also issue loans to private developers under certain circumstances. So those essentially are the four governing opportunities that we have as a municipality to participate in an economic development or private development standpoint. So we detail those out a little bit further. I won't go through each one of them, but you'll see the green check mark there. So related to this project, of those four opportunities, we only really have one to consider, and that's to issue a loan or an investment to the developer that follows the state statutes for economic development. So we'll outline that a little bit further. North Carolina general statute 158-7.1 allows the local government to make appropriations for economic development purposes. That's a very broad ordinance, that's a very broad, or excuse me, very broad statute that gives a lot of broad authority to communities. Diving down a little bit more specifically, though, North Carolina general statute 160A-20.1 allows the local government to lend money to a private entity to carry out a public purpose for which the municipality is statutorily authorized to engage in. So an example of things that municipalities can engage in is land acquisition, economic development services, infrastructure improvements, et cetera. So in this circumstance, the town would be making an investment with a private developer for the purposes of land acquisition and economic development. So our interest in this is seeing the Town Center project come to life. We've seen a stalled project for 20 years now, and we want to see some life breathed into the Town Center area, and we believe we have a developer that has come to us with a site plan that aligns with our vision. So the statute requires that before we issue a loan to a private developer or make an investment with a private developer, I want to clarify that, there's loan opportunity and there's investment opportunity. The town has the authority to just give the developer money and expect no repayment. We also have the opportunity to give the developer funds and expect repayment, and that's the option that we're looking at here tonight. So again, the statutory requirements for a loan or an investment perspective would be that, again, it must be an authorized municipally-engaged process. So land acquisition and economic development is one of those, so we check that box. A public hearing must be held. That's what we're doing here tonight, to communicate to the public and get feedback from them on why we're considering such an agreement. We also have to determine what new jobs may be created as a result of the project and a probable average wage of those jobs. We'll outline that in a minute. And we also have the opportunity to determine whether the loan will be issued for market rate of interest, higher than or less than. So we do have legal authority to issue a loan at a lower-than-commercial rate. We also have the opportunity to issue a higher rate, so we'll outline that as well. So just to cover our statutory requirements and make sure we cover all of our bases here, the tax-based impact to the town, like I mentioned earlier, is just over $150 million. That includes land, construction, design, and public infrastructure associated with the Town Center project. This, again, will generate $530,000 in additional new abhorrent tax revenue for the town each year. To put that in perspective, $530,000 is more than two pennies on our tax rate. So it's a pretty significant increase in revenues for our community. From an employment standpoint, impact standpoint, again, these are probable estimates. There's no clause that says the developer has to meet these obligations. These are just based on industry standards, industry estimates for this type of project. So the operational phase, meaning once it's up and running and fully built out, will have a direct job creation of 763 new jobs in our community. This is important for Harrisburg because we know a lot of our residents leave our community to go to work. We don't have a lot of high-paying, Class A, white-collar type of jobs here in our community, and having a, a large amount of Class A office space within this development will bring that to our community. So we used a nationwide marketing firm, Cushman Wakefield. They have a national average of 194 square feet per employee. So using just the office space that is going to be generated by this potential project is how we came up with that 763 new jobs. There are likely going to be many more than that, but we wanted to project on a conservative basis. During the construction phase of the project, it will have an indirect job creation impact of 849 jobs in the region. The annual wage, when, once it's all said and done from an operational phase, will have an annual operate, or annual wage of just under $60,000. So that's going to cover everything from your retail employee all the way up to the Class A office space. So that is significantly higher than the county average wage in Cabarrus County. So obviously, very positive impacts from a statutoryal standpoint. So now we'll get into the loan details, the investment details. So Harrisburg will invest into Capital Nexus $3 million to complete land acquisition. We will charge them an annual rate of interest of 6% on the loan. 6% rate is higher than fair market rate for commercial loans at this time. Commercial loans are in the high twos to low 5% if you were to go out and just secure one on your own now. So we're going higher. We want to make sure that we protect ourselves to the best of our ability in this entire process, and you're going to hear that a lot. You're going to hear me say, "Protect, protect." So the town wants to do whatever it can to protect its best interests, its financial interests in this particular investment partnership. The town will require a down payment of $25,000 prior to clo, or excuse me, at closing. The purpose of that $25,000 is when we pull our funds out... The purpose of that $25,000 is when we pull our funds out of our investment or our savings account, we're losing interest opportunity when we pull that money out. That $25,000 being front-loaded to us will help us cover that lost interest that we would have as part of participating our funds in this project. We would require that the developer repay the loan by June 30th of 2020. So we're not looking at a long period of time here. We're looking at a relatively short period of time in which the developer must pay this off. They will be required to notify the town of their intent to close by May 15th. So even earlier than the June 30 closing is that we would require them to tell us whether they can or cannot move forward with meeting the obligations of that loan. Simultaneous with the closing, the town will secure a deed of trust or secure first lien holder position on two parcels within Town Center. So this is the collateral that we would get on the loan. So we're making a $3 million investment. We want to protect that investment, and we are protecting that investment with two parcels of land. Those two parcels of land currently sit in Town Center. Parcel 1 is 1.3 acres, which is the current Old Sports Junction site, if you're familiar with that. It has an appraised value, so we've gone out and had a third-party appraise the value of that property. It's appraised at just over 2.3 million. Parcel 2 is just under 3.2 acres. It's a vacant piece of property to the east of Town Hall here. It's close to the Town Center condos that exist there. That acreage on that land is appraised at 1.695 million dollars. So you have a total appraised value of the two parcels at just under $4 million. So when you talk about from a security and collateral perspective, we're loaning someone $3 million, and in return, we're getting collateral of $4 million. I don't know if anybody's in banking, that's a pretty good, you know, you don't really find that very often. So it's a pretty strong collateral position for the town to be in, in this partnership. Here's a map of the two parcels identified there. Again, you can see on the left is the Old Sports Junction site and the acreage associated with it. On the right, you'll see the parcel there next to Town Center. So from a funding mechanism, how is the town going to just come up with $3 million to invest with Capital Nexus? So again, want to make sure we outline how this payment will take place. So the town would issue not a payment to Capital Nexus, but we would issue payment to the Town Center escrow agent. So the escrow agent in charge of closing on this property would receive the $3 million from the town only after verification that Capital Nexus has transferred their 5.4 million commitment into the deal. So we want to make sure that their money is in before our money is in. If their money never shows up, our money never shows up, and the agreement never goes forward. So again, another layer of protection for the town. We would use $1 million from our capital reserve fund and $2 million from our fund balance. Our fund balance is considered our savings account or our rainy day fund. So what are the implications of the town dipping in and using $3 million of really unanticipated funding? So the impacts to the capital reserve fund are not all that negative. Obviously, we're going to draw down a million dollars out of that fund, but we will still be able to fund all of the capital projects that we've got budget for in our current budget year. It would certainly limit any new unknown items that have not come up. So if something were to come up, an opportunity were to come up, we would certainly put ourselves in a limiting position on being able to act in that regard. The comment is there that it will deplete capital reserve funds. It won't draw it down to zero, but it will draw it down to about $300,000. So we will still have some protection in that fund, but it will essentially draw a lot of those dollars out. There is a part of this agreement that will be discussed tonight is that there is a replenishment provision. So provided that the council agrees with the terms that have been outlined, while we draw our capital reserve fund down, we will still be able to maintain current known capital projects, not only in our current year, but in future years. So what we have is a 10-year plan that outlines all of our capital projects. We will be able to fund all of those projects in that capital project plan. The impact to our fund balance, our fund balance, again, is our savings account. We currently have a fund balance policy in place that requires us to maintain 40% of our operating budget in fund balance. So that essentially gives us about five months of protection that if the town received not a dollar of revenue, if you guys stopped paying your tax bills, that we could still operate for five months without any impact to ourselves. So that would reduce our fund balance from 40% down to just over 21%. So that's certainly an impact to us. It wouldn't impact any of the currently approved funding needs that we would have. It would just, again, draw down the available safety revenue that we would have. It would require an adopted plan by the town council to replenish those funds, and we'll talk about it in a minute, how we plan to reimburse ourselves for that. But first, let's outline the benefits to the town. So as I mentioned earlier, it allows the completed sale of the 15 acres to Capital Nexus, who intends to develop the site according to the rezoning site plan that was unanimously approved by council. It helps jumpstart that development. It increases the tax base that we've already covered. It creates new jobs and provides new service opportunities for our community. So that is the piece. That's the economic development piece that makes this so attractive to us. It also gives site control to a developer who shares the same vision as us. We haven't always shared the same vision as the existing property owner with relations to how Town Center is developed. So this gives us a partner that shares that same vision. It also allows the developer to move forward without delay on the project. So instead of waiting 12 or 18 months to worry about the financings or potential issues with closing, that's another point, too, is that the current property owner has the opportunity to sort of walk away from this deal, and he can sort of maintain ownership of it due to the extension on the closing date. And so we, that's the reason we're considering this, is try to ensure that the property transfer takes place as we wish. So another benefit to the town is, you know, we're not a lending institution. We're not a Bank of America who's out trying to make money off of interest revenue, but there is no doubt economic benefit for the town. If the loan is paid in full by June 30th, then the interest revenue received on that loan is estimated at $120,000. That's revenue that we wouldn't receive otherwise without being an investor in this deal. So if everything goes smooth, we help the developer to move forward with their vision, and we also make about $120,000 off of it. So once the loan is repaid in full, we'll put those funds back into our capital reserve fund and back into our fund balance to bring them back up to their appropriate levels. And in addition, we have that $120,000 that we would be able to utilize as well. So now let's talk about the risk. What if they default? What if they are unable to come forward and pay us off by June 30th, 2020? Well, by securing the deeds and trusts on the two parcels, the town has collateral on the loan. So that's how we are protected. We would seek foreclosure opportunities on those two parcels. Again, seeing that the parcels are valued at roughly $4 million, the loan being valued at $3 million, we have quite a bit of protection there on the collateral side of things. Any more than that, and they could argue that we are having undue and unfair debtor practices with them. In the foreclosure process, the town would have two options that we would be able to consider. We could either move forward with the foreclosure and have a foreclosure agent sell the property via third-party, and the town would receive back any revenues that we have invested into it. So we'd be made whole in that aspect. Or we could seek ownership of the properties outright. If we got into a situation that we thought, hey, there's value there, we want to go out and try to acquire this at a lower rate than what it's appraised at, we would have that opportunity. Again, that's probably not something that we would do. We probably just want to be paid back and moved on, but that is an opportunity that the town would have to consider at that point. So importantly, too, is that the town maintains a 10-year financial model, so it helps guide us in any financial decisions that we make and how it impacts our future decisions and abilities to fund both operations and capital. Our financial model shows that the town could easily absorb any new debt service payment if we wanted to move forward with purchasing it. But again, that's something that likely we would try to avoid. We would just want to be made whole on. So we have two options there. We can go forward, and we can have collateral and land that's valued there, or we'll seek out a foreclosure agent and gain those funds back via sale of the properties. So a little bit additional detail, too, as well, is that if a loan for repayment of capital reserve and fund balance is not received, the risk to the town is carrying a lower fund balance and reserve until such time that either the foreclosure process has been completed or land sale has ended. So again, no risk to any capital reserve fund projects that we have, but certainly there is a risk of carrying that lower fund balance during that time period. Capital Nexus does intend also to make immediate improvements to the Old Sports Junction site. The improvements include an immediate upfit for a restaurant or market or brewery-type use, and that's a short-term use. So if you go back to the site plan that I showed earlier, is there's a much greater use for that parcel that's intended, but in the short term, as they generate interest, they want to take advantage of that shell building that exists there now and generate activity and investment as a result of that. So we will allow them to make improvements to that building, but that's only going to even increase our collateral even more as they invest up to a million dollars on upfitting that building. We would also stipulate in the agreement that there can be no second lien holder position put on the two parcels. So again, it's ours, and ours only. It's protected for us to seek out if we need to. Capital Nexus is also currently in the due diligence phase with a lending institution for the repayment of the funds to the town. So we've received a letter from a bank stating that they're in their due diligence process. So that shows the town that they are actively out searching for that private financing to pay us back. So they anticipate to be able to pay us back April or May without any issue. But again, we don't want to take them for their word. We have to investigate the worst-case scenario, and we feel like we flush that out and give the town as much possible protection as we can in this deal. So that was a lot. Sorry, I went through that. Hopefully, everybody sort of understands that. But at a high level, it's just, you know, we're making an investment in the developer to bring this site to fruition, bring this project to fruition, and we've covered ourselves from a financial protection perspective as much as we legally can. I think if we added any more sort of legal or requirements from a collateral standpoint, they could argue that there were unfair debtor practices taking place. Just also want to let everyone know that this is not something that town staff has flushed out on its own. We have sought legal counsel from our town attorney. We've also reached out to a third-party financial advisor and gotten their guidance and their assistance in creation of the agreement, and we've even gone a step further and sought bond counsel. So a bond counsel that the town utilizes has given their input and representation on this. So this is something that we feel like we have thoroughly flushed out from a legal perspective and put in every effort that we can to protect ourselves. Now, that's not to say that there's not risk. Anytime you make a loan with a party, there's certainly risk associated with that, but we have protected ourselves to the point that we will either receive land or funds if they default. And I think in both case scenarios, we will easily be able to make ourselves whole in a period of time. So with that said, I will turn it over to any questions.
Okay, Hanes, I got a couple. First of all, I hate to even say this, but we are a Bank of America. We're a government institution, so I don't like that idea of it. But if they're going to put a million dollars in a sports junction, how come they don't have the 3 million that they need to get the property? And how long have they known they needed 3 million? And the timeline, I don't like to be, like, and I know it's not your fault, but if you don't do it tonight, and then he's going to take the deal. Listen, I've lived here for 30 years, probably longer than anybody up here, and I don't like, I don't want Mark Smores to have that property, but I just don't know if it's worth the risk if we don't get our money paid back. And I lived right across the street where that nail salon is. This was cornfield 30 years ago, and I loved it. And all of a sudden, I went to work one day at American Airlines, and a guy said, "They're getting ready to build something across the street from me." And I said, "There's no way in the world they're going to do that." Two months later, you see what I'm hearing, and it's been like this as long as I can remember. So I'm up in arms about it. I don't, you know, it's not that I don't trust Tony, but, you know, last time I looked, it said, you know, "Government institution, not a Bank of America." So I'm pretty, I think they should have planned better to get their money before they come back and put it on this council. I don't think it's fair to come back and put that kind of burden on this council.
I don't want to speak for the developer, but I want to clarify, because I think that's a misconception, is it's not that they haven't prepared. They had an agreement in place with the property owner for that $3 million portion. The terms of that agreement were changed about 45 days ago. Anyone who's familiar with commercial financing understands that it is not possible to get a private loan in 45 days. And that's really where they're facing. So it's not that they haven't been unable. They've been able to show us financial commitment of the 5.4 million. And to answer your question about investment into the facility versus land acquisition, is it's much easier to get vertical financing than it is to get horizontal financing?
And I know who they're dealing with, and so does everybody else in this room. If they don't, they shouldn't know who he's dealing with, and it's not an easy person to deal with. And I agree with, everybody wants their hands out of it. I'd like to have him off, out of the books, but I don't know if I want to do it at my expense. That's my two cents.
I think my biggest question I've got that I've wrestled since October 2nd, when we found out about it, is do we want to continue to see Town Center stay the way it has for the last 20 years?
I agree with that.
You know, you said yourself, you come out and you're seeing what you seen 20 years ago.
25 years ago.
Is that what we want to see in 10 more years? Is that what we want to see in 10 years or five years? My fear, and I know it's maybe not healthy to make decisions out of fear, but my fear is if we do not help, this is what we're seeing for the next 10 years, and we are going to lose $560,000 every year for the next 10 years. Can we do that? Can we do that?
So Christopher, on your statement with, "We don't make decisions out of fear," I flipped that and look at risk. So if we look at where we're at today, we're in a situation because of a failed loan agreement, not in writing, terms changed. I was not excited, as Councilman Russo stated, that we found this and got this on the 2nd, short amount of time. I assure you, I know probably every single council member has lost sleep over this one. But if we look back at that first situation where the loan agreement changed, we're at a position now where only one mistake can be made. And if that mistake can be made and that note is not paid, we got a domino effect. And I assure you, that once the town goes to foreclose on that, it won't just be in the Tribune, it'll be in the Observer, it'll be on 36, it'll be on Channel 3, it'll be on Channel 9. Every developer will be absolutely aware of, we went into foreclosure on that property. That property now no longer has a value of 3.97, but now becomes pennies on the dollar because they know the town wants to get out of that position. Once you get to that point, now we're working with the other landowner of the 5.4. We don't know who the 5.4 is. They could be the best partner in the world, but then again, they could be the worst partner. We just don't know. And then, you know, we've talked about a similar scenario of acquiring the property in Town Center before Capital Nexus came in. And when we looked at that, the risk that we're looking at right now was not on the table. The foreclosure risk was not there. The other thing was, we, at that time, it was not taking our reserves from 40% to 21.75. You know, we worked hard to get that reserve to 40%. And, you know, when you look at, we put a million on the train station, 10 million on a park expansion, 5 million on a water tower. We just gave a TIF to Farmington Ridge, and we're probably going to end up doing a TIF on this property. You know, three years ago, I sat up here and I said, "We were living on beans and rice." And I said, "We needed to do something because we were Robin Peter to pay Paul, to make our ends meet." And I feel like we got to that point. We increased the taxes, but now we've gone to the other end, and in some ways, I think we're reaching too big for where we are today. I feel we need to digest some of our debt and move forward. Had this not eaten into our capital reserves as much, I may have been on board, but at 21%, I can't get behind that.
Do we have, excuse me, we'll go to public comment. You guys can talk here in just a second. Do we have any more questions for Hanes? All right, we're going to open up the public here. For those speaking for or against, I do have a sign-up sheet, but no one signed up, so it's potluck. Anybody wishing to step forward and state their name and address?
I think it's a great idea on the surface. The concern I have is I remember working in corporate before I started being an entrepreneur, and I remember overnight, the market crashed, my 401K crashed, my property value went down over thirty percent in less than a week. My only concern, as I wrap my financial brain around this, and I was a financial analyst for years, it looks great on the surface, but my first thoughts are, as a resident, what don't I know? And given the amount of debt, as Councilwoman Smith pointed out, our town currently has, and maybe currently is on the books, how tight are we truly, are truly stretching ourselves if something unexpected happens? That's my biggest concern. Something that we can't predict, a weather anomaly. And yes, I'm sure Capital Nexus is doing everything they can do in good faith, and I appreciate that the town is doing everything it can do to cover us and cover the money with the four million, but it just doesn't feel right. We, as Councilman Russo beautifully stated, we are not a bank. I don't want anything to do with Mark Schwartz. I doubt anybody in this room, I mean, dealing with Mr. Schwartz has been a pain for years. And I've spoken with many of you about that separately. What could we do? This is our chance. But it's maybe another chance that we instead try to come in as an intermediary with Mr. Schwartz, instead of us paying the three million, and see if something else could be worked out with him and Capital Nexus, instead of us being the ones that come up and basically bail Capital Nexus out. Thank you.
So Haynes, or Lee, the bottom line our reserve will be down to, give me a dollar amount, what's the bottom line our reserve will now be down to?
About three million.
Three million?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We currently have, what is our current bond rating for the transportation bonds?
We don't have a bond rating because we've never issued a bond for the town.
But, you're gonna get ready to with the transportation bonds?
Correct.
So, how will this affect the Standard and Poor and the Moody's bond rating for the town of Harrisburg?
It will not.
Because?
We've actually flushed it out with our financial advisor, and there's no impact on any future debt that we have planned, or the bond issuance that we have planned related to the transportation bond.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against?
So I've lived, Michael Painter, thirty-six thirty, Charlie Lane. I've lived in Harrisburg since I've been little, played in a wreck, and I never heard of Capital Nexus before. So I just did a quick search while you were talking. And the, on their website, it says, "Is a Charlotte-based company led by Mr. Tony Zhang that focuses on acquisitions in large..." So then I just looked him up on Wikipedia.
He is in the room, so he'll be, if we need to speak to him. Tony's right here.
He exists.
I mean, I just, I mean, he's, you're not the, you're not the famous one? That's worth twelve-point-six billion? Okay. Because it said, "He was known as Tony Zhang as well." Okay. I just saw that he was worth twelve-point-six billion. I was like, I'm just curious. Okay. I just saw that in simple Google, and I was blown away by, by that. So, thank you for the clarification.
I saw you have a bunch of hospitals, or hotels, and buildings. Okay. All right, that was my question.
I do want to comment just real quick, for, from a clarity perspective, that Capital Nexus is the language that is used here. Capital Nexus is the entity in which Tony is the CEO of, but there will actually be an HTC or Harrisburg Town Center LLC associated with this project. So I just don't want to confuse anybody moving forward from an LLC perspective, which is very common for developments. But to answer Bryce's question, Bryce, you asked a question about, Bryce, you asked a question about, can we seek other options with the property owner? And we looked into those. So, I wanted to just confirm that there were other options that we had available to us. But due to how the town has to statutorily release or surplus property, we could not go and acquire it from Mark Schwartz and transfer ownership of it to Capital Nexus. There were some complications with that, so that would have been the cleaner way for us to do it, but unfortunately, the state statutes don't allow us to cleanly do that. So the avenue that we're pursuing is what we deemed the most appropriate. So, I want to let you know, we did research that.
Anyone else wishing to address council?
Hi, John Sanchez, sixty-three fourteen, Key Lane. Did I hear you correctly say that the tax impact is roughly a half a million dollars a year?
In new revenue, yes.
In new revenue?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's the, just from a strictly dollars and cents point of view, that's the downside, if we don't step in to help this move forward?
Correct. You will not, there's the potential to not realize that impact of the new development. That is correct.
Okay. This is, I just heard about this yesterday. I don't keep up with things as well as I should, which I would encourage everybody to, like, come to these more often, so it's not a surprise. It obviously wasn't a surprise to council, they were aware of this. It just doesn't seem to me like this is like an emergency for the town that we have to get done. And the worst that happens if we don't step in and do this, is we miss out on a potential extra half-million in taxes. So, for all the risks and some of the things that the other council members brought up, it just doesn't seem to me like we're missing out on that much. I've only lived here for a couple of years, but I live right here on Key Lane and Town Center. I kind of like it here. I just don't think it's that bad, like, I don't know if there's like a perception that we're, Town Center's like wallowing because it hasn't been fully developed, but when I bought my place a couple of years ago, I could look around and see it's not fully developed, and it's not the end of the world. If it takes another six months or a year, or whatever, for it to get developed, I don't know, as a resident, I just don't see that as the end of the world.
Do you want me to restate my name and address?
Yes, please.
Ian Patrick, fifty-seven oh-one, Manchester. I don't, I'm not sure what to think of this, and the decision clearly is yours, so I just thought I'd give you a couple of things to think about, maybe. I think a lot of us haven't had time to process this, so I suspect if we haven't, you haven't as well, even though I think you've had it since the second. I'm not sure where the budget numbers come for revenue and those kind of things. I'd want to know if that was, questions you guys should be asking, if that's full capacity on all the office spaces, all that kind of stuff? Is it ninety, ninety percent? Because, you know, the current leased space in, in Mark's properties is, I don't know what his leased area is, fifty percent or something like that? A lot of empty storefronts. If we're gonna use the building as collateral, we're gonna make sure that's presumably paid off before that gets demolished for the other work? Or is there a plan to demolish it? I just want to make sure we don't have an asset, it gets demolished, and then it's no longer the full collateral value.
It would not be demolished if the town was ownership. If the town were to seek foreclosure on it, we would not demolish it.
Right. So I just want to make sure that, you know, stays that way. Again, I, this is hitting me quick, I didn't even plan on speaking on this. You know, what is our plan to recover funds under a worst-case scenario? We're on sort of borrowed time with a good economy as it is. So if we're looking at a third-quarter twenty-twenty recession, that's my guess, we might be in a place we don't want to be.
Would you like me to answer your question?
No.
You don't want me to answer your question?
Oh, whether my guess is correct or not?
No. About how, what our, our plan is.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I thought we couldn't have back and forth, so I'm just giving them some things to think about.
I'm just trying to answer your questions.
Please, yeah, love to hear it.
So the foreclosure procedure is our repayment. So if they pay off the loan, replenished, easy. If they don't, it takes about a hundred-and-twenty days to complete a foreclosure. So beyond June twentieth, a hundred-and-twenty days from that, foreclosure will be done, we'd be repaid at that point.
On pennies, presumably.
That's your assumption.
That's a pretty big assumption to make as a town. The other thing I'd say is that you have an election coming up, and so, if, I'm being serious here, if this council depletes the entire capital, or not the entire Capital Reserve Fund, but also the general fund, you leave a new council with an empty sack, and maybe they might have something to say about this decision for such a big amount of money. And the last thing I'd say, if, if for, for two meetings now, we can't pass a ordinance on solicitors? Maybe we have some time. I'm serious about that, I'm not trying to be funny. I'm not trying to be funny. We can think about it. Thank you.
Dave Dimone, Rocky River Coffee, forty-three fifty Main Street. Suite one-oh-nine, fifteen years in business in Harrisburg, so I feel like I got a little bit. I'm gonna be honest, because that's who, that's just born and raised in the North, and we're just very honest people, and I'm probably gonna get nailed when I get out of here, but, but I've learned to love the South, because you guys are great customers. And that's why I've sustained my business for so long with an empty Town Center. I'm gonna be honest with you, this is my first Town Council meeting in a long, long time. Because I feel like the town had a hard time really understanding businesses and our position here in this town. And for the first time, I feel like, to a point, there are some people that understand that business owners are people too in the town. And by the way, I've been, I was a resident for a decade, so I have both sides of the coin here, guys. I'm not just some business guy who's just coming in town, running the business, and I leave, okay? Now I do, because my wife wanted to move to a farm out, a couple of miles away, but, but I did live here for ten years. And we are probably one of the only original businesses here in the Town Center that have survived this far. Myself, AJ, and Three Monkeys. We're the three original businesses. And we have been waiting for this to happen for years and years and years. And you know what? Frankly, I was upset with the town for a long time, because I felt like the town had an obligation at some level to step in. Not that they had to, not that they were, it was their job, but I feel like they had an obligation. You know, you hear about revitalization of towns all the time, small towns, that's what you hear. And I'm assuming in that revitalization of stuff, that there's an investment. And the town makes an investment into their own town. And now, we have great people, guys, we really do. But at the end of the day, when people drive into town and they come to the Town Center, it's not the greatest look for our town. And I think people see that. And so, I see before us a huge opportunity to change that. And for those of you who are worried about risk, there's risk in everything you do. I took a risk years ago when I decided to take over Rocky River Coffee. That was a risk, and it turned out to be a tremendous blessing. But I'm asking the town to really think about this opportunity that we have, to revitalize the town, to take a risk, and please don't think of it an investment, no offense to Tony, but think about an investment in the people. Because we are business owners, and we are people, and we've been here for a long time offering services to the town. And I know they're not all here, but I promise you, I've talked to all of them, and they can't tell you how important this Town Center means to us, and how long. And I feel like we have an opportunity, and if we lose out on this opportunity, I think someone said it, it could be another ten years plus before we have this opportunity again, maybe longer. And so, things are just gonna keep building, okay? You see Publix go in, you see Harris, they're not gonna stop building around us, guys, okay? They're not gonna go, "Oh, Harris, Town Center's not being done, we're not gonna come into Harris..." They're gonna keep building around us, and slowly but surely, this Town Center is gonna die off if we don't do something about it. And now, I do think it's the town's responsibility to step in and invest in the town and in the people, the business owners. And in turn, I think the customers would love it too. Because I know, years ago, when I wanted to go somewhere, I would drive to Burke Dale. I would drive down to Glen, whatever it's called down there, okay? Why do we want to do that when we can create this atmosphere right in our own town and beautify it? We talk about beautification, okay? Let's beautify the Town Center of Harrisburg and take this opportunity and not miss out. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Zach Hinchburger, one of the owners at percent Tap House, forty-two fifty Main Street, Unit one-oh-nine. As I've stated before, I know some of y'all have probably been here for it. I do not live here. I do not pay taxes to this particular town nor county in the sense of homes. I understand that we're not talking about homes, per se, but I do pay taxes in the alcohol sales that I do deal with. So, from what I've gathered from my customers coming to drink at our establishment is, they're quite frankly fed up, I'm sure, just as much as all of y'all, whether you agree or disagree with each other on a particular developer and owner of the current property. I do not deal with him, he is not my landlord, I have a separate landlord who is amazing and great. Her and her husband took a risk and do, did purchase my building from, I don't believe it was Mr. Schwartz, but it was another individual. So, they took a risk. They do rent their unit from Mark Schwartz, and they pay more than they do at Waverly, whatever the one is down south. So, not only are they paying to rent their spot, they also pay the taxes on the building, but every single one of their units is occupied and has a tenant. So, more or less what I see is, regardless if you agree that there is a recession coming or not, which I do not believe there is, I think it's just a hype that people get put in their heads, if we don't invest in it, as I say, you and myself, as well as a business owner, you do lose the five-hundred-thousand potential extra tax dollars a year. If a recession was to hit and you did not invest in it, you were still gonna get hit with no growth. If the deal falls through, I do not believe you will get another developer to come in here and potentially want to invest money. I'm just giving you a standpoint, my family are a bunch of business owners in Florida, we've lost money, we've gained money, we've lost it again, we've sold our business, we've rebought our business through the recessions. My stepdad's owned it since he was twenty-one, he's fifty-something years old now. What I'm saying is, is yes, we are not a bank, per se, I get it, but you also have the power to loan the money. I believe the reason their money was not probably acquired, because I think someone did ask either publicly or in the crowd about why they couldn't gain the three million, from what I've heard from my customers and just rumors, was there was a deal in place, and the particular owner backed out last second, which doesn't surprise me from what I've heard from his tenants and potential business people. And as Dave did mention, you know, business is risk, and you guys apparently want business, you want to be on the right side of opportunity, there's a risk at that. If the development, per se, does not go through, I do believe you will lose businesses. People who have been here for fifteen years, who have probably, I'm sure Dave has had tough times trying to stay Three Monkeys at, you know, with Casey, and, you know, I kind of look at it this way, my stepdad wasn't a banker either, but he still gave me money, and I repaid him within six months. You know, because my business flourished because of you guys, and I do appreciate that. Thank you. But, you know, it was a risk still. I left a very secure job to do this. I worked for Publix for seven years, I was a manager for Publix, and, you know, with Dave saying that Publix chose a town like this to come to, they're not going anywhere. Even if you do hit a recession, they're not leaving. Publix has never closed a store because of a bad economy or business is not growing around it. So, you know, they're here for the long haul. And you will see, you know, the development, should it not go through, the businesses on this side near your Town Center, near what is supposed to be your center of activity, it will be kind of embarrassing more than it is already, and I hate to say that, but as I've said before, coming to one of these meetings, you know, it wasn't kind of sad to want to put my business in a spot that was surrounded by open fields, but I took the risk for it, because, and I didn't even know these guys were coming, just so we're clear. I found out like the week before we opened. I found out like the week before we opened that these guys were coming. I was like, oh, cool, great, that will hopefully, that investment will pay off. And I'm sure five-plus years, whatever it takes to do construction. But even if it doesn't, you know, I would still hope the goodwill of the citizens here take care of me and don't make me have to leave. Because, I mean, if, if there isn't a development, I mean, nobody's coming to downtown. I mean, you guys put money into a train station that's coming, hopefully, and I think with the thirty, 333, you know, living units, these people will now be able to come from Charlotte and live here and also drive, you know, take the train to work or start bringing their businesses here, because now they have a means, you know, of a more pleasurable experience instead of trying to direct somebody across three fields and, you know, explain, oh yeah, you know, coffee shop across the field over there. You know, at least, you know, I don't know. I'm just saying is, is, you know, like I said, I do not live here, I'm not trying to bring in, you know, the whole home development thing. I understand that you all are not a bank, and it's not so much for me, it's just for you guys. Because whether or not the development happens and, you know, with the fears that some individuals do have, not just here, but nationwide, a recession, you're still gonna lose out if you don't do it, because you also lost out on the 500,000, and it could be more coming your way in tax revenue that will refill that bracket. So I know I've probably hit my time limit, and I'm trying to cut it short, I just, you know, from a business standpoint, you know, I do, I do wanna see it happen. But from, for you guys too, I could die tomorrow, but, you know, 20 years from now, this development could benefit y'all, you know, more than what we think of it right now. So, that's just what I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against?
Hi, Billy Rich, 3618 Charley Lane. Can you explain how this only depletes the funds down to 21.75%? 'Cause it seemed like we're going from 2.3 million down to only 300,000. That'll be like 80% drop.
So, there's two different funds. So you're referring to, we have two separate funds, Capital Reserve Fund, which is, all right, let me give you a municipal budget, budget class 101 here. Our fund balance is our security net, our safety blanket. We are required by our own policy to maintain 40% of our general fund operation budget in that account. So that number changes from year to year as our operation budget changes year to year. Any revenue over expenditures or unspent funds that we have in a budget year that is above that 40% number get moved to what we call a Capital Reserve Fund. That Capital Reserve Fund helps us pay cash for things like equipment purchases, land purchases, park projects, et cetera, anything identified in our 10-year plan. So there are two totally separate funds. Fund balance is left there as a security blanket. Capital Reserve Fund helps us pay for all of the capital expenses that we have outlined in any given year.
And capital is being drawn down 1 million and the other by 2 million?
That's correct.
So we had, still had, we had what, 4 million in the, well, I'm a balance fund or what?
We have about, we have a little over $5 million in our fund balance.
So that's going down to three.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against?
Hi, Jessica Fava, 4455 Mill Landing Drive. I think the bottom line is, it's just such a tight time constraint and that the decision has to be made. I don't know what the contract says, like, the closing date's tomorrow, what is the extension, what is the extension date on that contract?
The 21st.
Okay. And the bottom line for you guys, I don't know, I'm torn. Like, I would love to see, I am, I'm really torn. I would love to see Town Center built up. Clearly, it has been a long time, so there's something going on that developers, I'm sure you're not the first developer to come in and want to. So, it's, you know, this seems to be working for the town for so far it's going, but does the benefit outweigh the risk? And I think that that's the bottom line and that you all, we're gonna have to discuss. And is there enough time tonight to, to fully, to have a full discussion on, on the benefits and the risks? So, that's it.
Anyone else wishing to adjust counsel? Here now, we'll close the public here and go to counsel for consideration.
Mayor, motion to approve?
Got a motion on the floor to approve.
Second.
Properly seconded. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I also have a lot to say.
Well, ladies first.
I was gonna let her speak. You know Vinita, right?
This is the most important economic development decision we will have to make as a council, and we need to get this right. About a year ago, we talked about purchasing all this property ourselves as a town. And now we're being asked to put money up for this development, 150 billion dollar development. That's huge. We're gonna have the loan out for less than a year, and we still have the piece of property. We have a solid asset as collateral that's worth more than the amount of the loan. We've already wasted 20 years. We have to do this. Town Center will again be quite worth starting. We have to do this.
Yes, sir.
So, for, for me, this is, I think Councilman Smith said we've probably not slept well, or somebody said none of us probably have. And I think it's something we have all wrestled with. We've all talked and kicked ideas around or molded over, and, you know, is it good, is it bad? You know, this wasn't an easy decision. It, it's something I think that, as Ms. Conrad said, this is the most important EDC vote we will make and have made over the last four years. And, you know, it's, it's not one doubt I think any of us come up with lightly, or that anybody's at fault for voting either way, to be honest. I think it's something that we've all had to wrestle with and come to our own conclusion. I, I think in this particular case, we have good, solid liabilities and, or collateral in place. It is a minimal liability with the amount of collateral. If we would've bought this a year ago, as we had considered, we would, would've had to hold it and find a buyer. In this particular case, we have a buyer, and it's a short-term bridge loan. And, you know, I, I got permission from my wife to bring this up, and I shared with her the public information that was available. My wife analyzes these types of loans every day in bigger amounts than this. And she said this is a good deal for the town, that the particular lending institution she works with would not have had an issue with this. And I have to trust her that she's a far smarter woman than I am.
I operate with the glass half-full, not half-empty. This particular subject has brought this council together. We have probably communicated more with this particular thing than we've communicated with any particular development we've done. And for that, it's a win. I've vetted this thing seven ways from backwards, whatever that means. And I had a resident tell me, when this came out, if we can't invest in ourselves, who do we invest in? We gotta invest in ourselves. And you gotta believe that we've vetted this thing every way we can. And for that reason, I motion for it, and I will vote to approve it.
And for clarification, my no vote tonight has nothing to do about not supporting our residents or our businesses. You know, you've heard us, and I've mentioned it as well, we looked at this before, and the scenarios were very different. I just, I'm not comfortable with the risk. That's just who I am, and if you understand my makeup, you'd understand where I'm at on that decision. And I, I continue to echo that, not only did we lose a lot of sleep, but as Councilman Selberg noted, there's been a lot of discussions back and forth and where, where is the right way to be? And I still hate the idea that we got this 10 days ago and we're in this position. I mean, I, I don't think that's fair to anybody to, to put us in a spot like that in short notice.
Any more discussion? We got a motion on the floor, properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Rick and...
I do?
Yeah, there's multiple motions associated with this, so that was the purpose of the agreement with the individual. There's an intent to reimburse ourselves. There are several of their motions that are included in the packet, and if you'll, if you guys will go through those.
So did we actually hit one with this one? Which one would we call this one?
Start process to go through.
If you pull it up on the screen, it'd be helpful.
I can do that.
Actually, all right. So I've motioned to approve the attached economic development agreement. Would we consider this one that, the one we just motioned? All right, so the next one is motion to approve the attached declaration of official intent to reimburse.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion on the floor, properly seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion to approve the attached resolution to restore fund balance.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor, properly seconded. Any more discussion?
One thing, do you guys not want to do that? I think you need to be voting yes on that, even though you disagree with the intent of the first motion.
Put the fund balance back.
We want to reimburse the fund balance.
You want to reimburse the fund balance?
Thanks for the question.
Just wanted to make that clear.
All right, so we got a motion on the floor, properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve the attached budget amendments for the General Fund and Capital Reserve Funds, Fund General Fund.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion on the floor, properly seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we made it through that. Moving to new business. Budget amendment for 2019 end of year Capital Reserve Fund transfers. Um, do you wanna take a couple minutes short recess? I think we have some people needing to use the bathroom.
Take a five-minute recess?
Five-minute recess.
Sharp.
All right. Well, we'll just hold for one second. Well, actually, you can get started. I mean, I think you can catch up pretty quick.
This is pretty short.
Yep.
Yeah, so.
All right. Just got any good jokes? You wanna tell us why you're...
I don't think I'll tip.
Finance guy tell jokes. That's pretty funny, right?
Where can you pick ears?
All right, once Troy gets back, we'll go ahead and get started. I'm not sure where Ron went. Just go ahead and get, we'll get, we gotta keep going.
Good evening, mayor and council. First item of new business that I have for you tonight is consideration of amendments to the fiscal year 2019 budget ordinance for our Capital Reserve transfers. A quick rundown on the fund balance policy, although Haynes kinda covered it in Budget 101. But we have a minimum fund balance policy for the General Fund and for the Water and Sewer Fund. For the General Fund, it's any fund balance greater than 40% of operating and debt service expenditures. And in the Water and Sewer Fund, that number is 30%. Any excess over, over that threshold gets transferred to the Capital Reserve Fund and can only be used for capital purposes going forward in the next fiscal years. We calculate this after the audit, so that we know there are no more adjustments to the numbers required, and it's reflected in the fiscal year 19 financial statements that will be submitted to the state later this month.
Can you specify that when we create the budget document, when we're going through that process, we're estimating conservatively what we expect that transfer to be?
We don't fully understand what it is until the close of the audit, so just... Yeah, so at the beginning of the year, we have to balance the budget, and so this number can be used to help balance that budget, and it is an estimate. As the year progresses, we have more revenue come in than anticipated. We save some money on some of our operating expenditures. And so, once it all boils down, that we typically have a little bit more than what we anticipate going into the budget process. So, these amendments tonight are to get it up to the full transfer amount that you see. But we had already estimated a little over a million in the General Fund this year.
Changing it from the estimate to the actual.
To the actual, right. So, for this year, for fiscal year 2019 in the General Fund, the transfer is at 2.9 million dollars. You can see fund balance in 2018 and 2019 at just under 6 million. It dropped about $100,000 in fiscal year 19, and that is due to us having a little bit less in expenditures in fiscal year 19. So that required 40% number came down a little bit. The Capital Reserve balance, you can see, goes from 2 million to just over 4 million. So what that tells us is we spent about 900,000 in the General Fund on capital this year. So the net transfer there is about $2 million to the Capital Reserve Fund. On the Water and Sewer Fund side, the transfer this year is 2.7 million, and fund balance in the Water and Sewer Fund was just under 3 million. It's at about 2 and 1/4 to end the year. The Capital Reserve Fund is going from 5 and 3/4 up to about 6 and 1/2. So what that tells you there is we spent about 1.9 million in capital this year in both the Water Sewer and the Water Sewer Capital Project Fund. So, staff recommendation is to approve the budget amendments as presented, 2.9 million for the General Fund, 2.7 million for the Water and Sewer Fund, and I'll be glad to take any questions before the motion.
Any questions?
Do you need one or two motions?
We can have one motion tonight for all of the budget amendments.
So moved.
Got a motion on the floor?
Second.
Properly seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Consideration of Gavel, Dorn Engineering, Construction Administration Inspection Services for West Rocky River Elevated Storage Tank.
All right, this item's pretty straightforward, which you guys have before you is consideration of a contract for the Construction Administration and Inspection Services for the water tower. That project is just too large in scope and technical ability for the staff that we have, so there's a lot of vertical construction testing, a lot of structural steel testing, weld testing, and then just full-time construction management inspection. So this contract covers a 16-month period of full-time construction inspection for that project. Any questions? We ask that you approve the attached proposal in the amount of $430,448 to Gavel and Dorn Engineering for Construction Administration and Inspection for West Rocky River Elevated Storage Tank.
We got a motion on the floor?
Second.
Properly seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Preliminary plat for Harmony subdivision.
Mayor and council, and Sushil, before we get going on this, I want to, there have been a lot of questions that residents have posed to town staff, and council members have also brought their concerns and questions to staff as well to help answer related to this item tonight. And I just wanted to clarify that the preliminary plat approval process is a, a step, it's a formal step. It's really a checks and balances that takes place after a rezoning application is approved by the town. So it's a formal step that the town council has to do, but when they're considering the preliminary plat, they really have two objectives when they're looking at this, is A, does it meet the UDO? And B, does it contain the rezoning conditions that were applied to it during the rezoning process? So, those, when you, when you're sitting as a council member tonight, those are the two things that you are to look at when you make a decision on this. Now, understanding that if it gets to this point and staff has a recommendation of approval, then yes, it does meet the UDO, and yes, it has the rezoning conditions applied to it. So that presents sort of a quandary or a difficult situation for a council member who may have not been... who may have not been, uh, in support of the project from the beginning. And so I just wanted to outline as the seven council members make their considerations tonight, is they're not voting on support of the project. They're voting just to confirm and give a checks and balances to the fact that staff has confirmed that the actual site plan meets the UDO and conforms to the rezoning conditions. Now, they may choose to vote no for it, but you may see someone vote yes for something that they voted no for on the rezoning side of things. So I wanted to just set that standard and make that clear for, uh, council members as they sit up here and audience members as they sort of hear this process, uh, take forward. I know there were a lot of questions that were, uh, asked. I know there were a lot of recommendations that were presented to, uh, the town during the public comment period. Our staff will take an opportunity to answer those questions that we can. And council has the opportunity to potentially make some requests of the developers. But I want to make it very, very clear that this is not a point in the conversation or a point in the, uh, rezoning process where council can make a developer do anything at all beyond the conditions that have already been applied. So we heard often earlier the buffer, there was a, a request for a buffer. I'll let Sushil outline the buffer requirements between the different uses, but it's not something that was identified in the site plan. It was not something that was identified in the conditional rezoning. So it's not something that the town can even ask or require of the developer. Now, if the developer wants to out of their own goodwill, they have that authority to, but they don't have to. So I just want to set the stage for the whole conversation tonight to make sure that there weren't any expectations of residents or council members that were not met. I just want to make sure we all understand the legal authority for what we're doing when we approve a preliminary plat. So I apologize for that, but I just wanted to really set the stage for what this process is.
Thank you, Hanes, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, like Hane said, the agenda in front of you is to, uh, consider preliminary plat for Harmony subdivision, previously known as Stalings Road subdivision. Again, uh, this is from, from the planning steps perspective. So the rezoning was approved in August, uh, October of last year. So now we are at, at the preliminary plat stage. Planning board approved it. Council will take action today, and the next step is the construction drawings. So that's the evolution of subdivision approval as we go through this process. So, um, last October, the property was rezoned to conditional zoning RM1 and RV, uh, residential, medium density and residential villas. The property is located north side of Stalings Road at intersection of Raising Ridge Road. The site address for the record is 3550 Stalings Road and includes a total acres of 82.05 acres. At the rezoning, the total number of homes approved was up to 183 homes. That included 89 RV and 94 RM1 lots. The preliminary plat in front of you has one less lots, so we have 182 homes, uh, for your review. Like Hane said, our, our goal at the staff level is to review the submitted preliminary plat from, does it meet the UDO regulations? Does it meet the conditions that the council had approved during the rezoning? So we do those check and balance, and based on what we have seen, it does meet, and the staff is, uh, going to make, uh, recommendation to approve it. This is the, just location of the subdivision. You can see the, uh, edges and zoning district. You have LDR, which is low-density residential. That's in the county. On the west side is RL, Stalings Farm subdivision. The RV where the age-restricted portion of the community will be built is in the center, and RM1 are on the top and bottom end of that subdivision. And I, I'll address some of the questions after I finish my presentation that came up during the public comment. Uh, so when we did the rezoning, we, we checked for, uh, all the adequate public facilities, utilities. I know there was comment made about the sewer capacity. That's the first time I heard, and I've already checked with our public works director. We, we have available utilities from sewer, water, safety sanitation to meet this subdivision, so that's not a concern. Transportation, we did do a traffic impact analysis as part of the rezoning. All the improvements that were recommended through the TIA will be implemented as part of this subdivision. The two key improvements are the roundabout at Stalings Road and Raising Ridge Road, and a traffic signal at Stalings Road and Rocky River Road. Those are, uh, those you'll see as part of the preliminary plat. Schools, this is not new numbers. Uh, these are part of the rezoning numbers. Just wanted to show you as, as, as information. Again, we, we are at capacity, but school uses these numbers to plan for their future capital improvements. Uh, the conditions that will be part of the preliminary plat and carry on to the construction documents. Uh, the first condition is your catch-all. If we miss any federal, state, local laws, and we, we find out later in the process, the applicant is obligated to abide by, by those requirements. The, the second condition is about our, uh, it, this is typical with any, any conditional rezoning we do in Harrisburg. Vinyl siding will not be allowed. Third condition talks about the RV portion of the subdivision where it will be restricted, deed restricted to 55-plus only community. Applicant, uh, condition four is about paying the amount, uh, 164,394 towards our active open space, so that'll go to park and rec and used for our, uh, park improvement programs. Condition five, already addressed, talks about the TIA. Condition six, there is a portion of the subdivision that's in the floodplain, so they will have to go through the letter-up map revision, fulfill whatever that floodplain mitigation is required. So we put that as a condition. Uh, one of the conditions council put is, uh, the rental cap. Ten percent of the homes, total homes within the subdivision is capped for rental. Condition number eight talks about the, how the garage will be situated as, as the homes are built. If there is a third garage, it has to be in the rear, uh, building line. It cannot be, all three garages cannot be on the front load. And the lots designated in RV, which is again that age-restricted portion, the landscaping will be maintained by its way. This, that's again to maintain that quality of the neighborhood. There were questions that came up about the BMPs in the floodplain. Is it ideal to build in the floodplain? No. Is it allowed? Yes. So what, what, what the engineers look at is no net fill requirements. You're not allowed to impact the floodplain. So as long as you maintain that net fill, you're good to go. You can build in the floodplain. So this is, this is the rezoning site plan that the council approved last October. And if you look on the map, there's a lot of questions about the stub, street connection. This is how it was presented, but during the course of the decision-making process, one of the stub, street connection was removed. There was some confusion, and we brought it back to the council in November, and we, we all concluded that the decision from the council with staff's recommendation was to close the stub street to the north. As a result, you have in front of you the preliminary site plan that takes that into account, closing that stub street, so there's only one connection now. Uh, and your main entry is, uh, with that roundabout in Stalings Road. This is a close-up of the roundabout that will be built, meets all the federal highway standards and the NC DOT standards. Staff has reviewed and will be reviewing more as we go into the construction documents. The next traffic improvements is, uh, down at Rocky River and Stalings. They will be installing a signal as part of this project. Again, going back to why we are here is to look at the consistency between what the council approved during the rezoning and consistency with, with our UDO requirement. Staff has reviewed and found it to be consistent. This was presented to the planning board last month, and planning board recommended approval by the council as well. Uh, with those in mind, staff, uh, will recommend approval of the preliminary plat. Couple of questions, um, so there was, the first comment about, was about the property deeded to somebody else. We, we have no information on that. That property is not part of this subdivision, so you don't see, if you look at the map, based on my, my quick research, that property is, those two properties right here, which is on the south side of Stalings Road. And those are not part of this subdivision, so it, it doesn't come into play today. We can talk about the restrictions and do more research, but it has nothing to do with the preliminary plat. There were comments about the buffer. Our UDO has buffer requirements depending on what zoning district you are in. RM1, which is right here, and this is RE, Stalings Farm. From the buffer standpoint, those are in the same class of buffer requirement, class one. If you're, if you're proposing, uh, RM1 in RL, you're within the same class, no buffer requirements from a UDO standpoint. If you look at RV in the center, and we have LDR, low-density residential, it has a buffer requirement because you, you're... RV is in the center, uh, I know it's hard to see, but it's in the center of the subdivision. Our LDR is to your right. From a buffer standpoint, because RV is a lower class, they are required to provide type A buffer. That's what you see in the preliminary plat. So during the rezoning, there was no, no additional buffer requirements put on the applicant. That would have been the perfect time to have the conversation from the council's perspective if you wanted to have that buffer, uh, as part of the subdivision. Like Hane said, you can still have that ask, but legally, from the UDO perspective, we, it's not legally binding for them to provide it. It's up to the applicant if they're willing to do so. The next question that came up was the safety study. Typically, those kind of studies are done to mitigate the problems or look into the problems that happened in the past. In this case, we have no data to go and look at. If, if the desire of Stalings Farms community is to put sidewalks in the road, and if the council chooses to put money in it, that's great idea. I mean, sidewalks are great for kids to walk on, but that's different, uh, decision-making process that council will need to look into.
I think even further to that, the, uh, completion of the TIA, whenever we looked at those traffic connections into neighboring subdivisions, safety is obviously a concern, and I think, uh, if I remember correctly from the TIA, the, uh, the impact or the potential cut-through traffic from the new subdivision to Stalings Farm at peak hour, so this is during the peak hour of the day, I think was 12 trips out and eight trips in. So you're not talking about a significant addition of traffic to a particular public street.
There is definite, there is definitely public perception that there will be a lot of cut-through traffic, but from TIA, we did not see that. So we did not, uh, so we, we have to stand by those, those recommendations coming out of the TIA.
And to just add a further point too regarding the sidewalks, I know that the applicant and the town staff spoke with members that lived along Bovine Lane about the, uh, completion of sidewalks in the areas that do not have sidewalks, and that was met with a lot of resistance from property owners
That's correct.
who did not want sidewalks. So the town is not in a position to pursue, uh, something that the property owners are not interested in in terms of easement acquisition and putting in a, a sidewalk.
Hane, um, I don't know if it makes a world of difference or not, but while we're looking at that plat, you know, there is access in Stalings Farm to the elementary school, so the kids can walk over. So, I mean, I understand why they're asking for that, because, I mean, even if some of these kids here were to walk over, it certainly would help that.
We can definitely look into that.
The staff fully supports sidewalks. Uh, that's why you see all, for all of the new roads. Sidewalks are part of the roads, so we do not treat it separately. When Stalings Farm was built, sidewalks was, were not as common.
Right.
But to put, go back and put a sidewalk, it's, it's, it's not as easy as we want to. The property owners have to play...
But if there's access via that cul-de-sac, and we can, if there's an easement present, and we can go in and install a sidewalk fairly easily without encumbering or having to seek an easement from a property owner, we'll definitely look into that.
And, uh, the other question that came up was the heritage trees in the UDO. We do have heritage trees preservation requirement in the UDO. That's all I have, and I, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Once this is completed, uh, will there be any further traffic studies into what happens with Stalings or in the neighborhood?
We'll, we'll have to look at what, what problems we're trying to solve. Uh, i- if the council wants us to study, then we will definitely do that, but we won't be promising anything at this point.
The transportation study should start to take some account of that, right?
Transportation plan won't look into the details of, say, what happens on Bovine Lane, but it will capture the general flow of traffic there on Stalings Road. If, uh, if after completion of the Harmony subdivision, council feels like there's a need for that, it's certainly something that we could look into, and we, we would do. It would just be at our expense to do that. It wouldn't be on the developer's.
DOT already has it on their books to do something on veterans in Stalings, right? I mean, isn't that part of their, they know they have a problem there? Is that still, are they still doing something with that or thinking about it? Cause this is gonna exacerbate that problem, obviously, more that they already acknowledged they have, will move up on their priority list.
Part of these last two subdivision approvals, um, this one and the Shay Holmes property is the addition of a signal at Hickory Ridge and Stalings.
Which will start to alleviate some of it.
Right, and then, and then the, uh, the coordination, so they'll run off one cabinet. So it'll, it'll be more like one signal encompassing both intersections, um, so that those, uh, those movements aren't making a turn and then stopping, um, that they'll go straight through. So that's, that's DOT's, uh, addition to, uh, to these projects.
Yeah, Rob, let me ask you a question though. The traffic's really not gonna get alleviated unless they widen Stalings Road.
Well, so, so our, our TI, all of our TIAs, um, when we do development, our requirements are basically a do-no-evil requirement. You, you can't leave it in any worse condition than it is currently.
I know, but I'm just saying.
So, so that's, so that's a, you know, all of these improvements that, that are required of developers, um, and, and, you know, that really comes down from the state legislature onto you guys when, when you're doing ordinances, is how restrictive can you be? You can't, it's, it's tough to put already existing, um, problems that are supposed to be funded by state and local taxes on a development. So they kind of restrict you to that, and so they can't make it any worse, but it's not gonna alleviate. What you see out there today, um, generally doesn't get alleviated through these unless you have a scenario where it's already failing, and in order for them to build, they need to come in and fix the problem, which is exactly what's happening on Stalings Road. We, we have a lot of F movements at the school intersection, at Rocky River intersection, and then at Veterans Hickory Ridge intersection. So in order for these guys to go in, they, you can't make a, you can't keep it in an F. So they had to improve things up to C to, to get in. So these improvements, you, you will see some traffic alleviation, um, but it's not like, you, you're not coming in and doing mass widening and things like that, which I think the future of Stalings Road is, is to have a three-lane section.
I want to speak further just too on the, uh, the green space piece. I know that, that was brought up, and, and there was some concern. I made, I think even a little confusion that that was part of the project. And Sushil, I appreciate you pointing out that point, but just want to reiterate that it's not part of any green space active or passive requirement for the Harmony subdivision. I know that the property owner made, the developer, the way I understand it, purchased that parcel. If, uh, he was also acquiring the acreage there, uh, so I knew, I do know that that ownership has taken place. And if there were any recorded deeds on those parcels, it would have been registered in a title search on that property. And so I know that, I've seen, uh, deed documentation from residents in Stalings Farms associated with those parcels, but our best conclusion is that those deeds were never recorded, uh, which is why they weren't present and why it was allowed for the, uh, the developer to purchase those land without any deed options or issues, uh, associated with it. But do want to clarify that it's not even related to this property or this potential subdivision at all.
Any more questions?
Just a, kind of a house clean, those residents, Hanes, that have that concern, what's their path of recovery?
Yeah.
Is that, I mean, does that, does that go back to their title insurance, or?
If the deed was never recorded, there's nothing really to fall back on. Maybe our town attorney can offer some advice.
Without having seen the titles, I couldn't say exactly where they go. I think what they were talking about was some of those lots in Stalings Farm had some sort of a, um, an easement that went along with them. There was some open space. I remember, I think one of the people out here when we were in the middle of this brought some of that up. And, uh, that was when they were gonna do the, um, I think it was the, um, park contribution. And they would use that property, and they were saying, well, you can't do that. And it turned out that wasn't part of the final approvals, so it never became part of the, part of the plan. That's what I remember from that. Whether those deeds have been stored, I would have no idea. If they're not, but I can tell you this, if they're not on the record, they don't, they don't count for anything. Cause in North Carolina, we're considered what's called a pure race state when it comes to recording stuff. But if you don't, if you have something that's not recorded, then it just really have no use to you. I'll tell you that much.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, to help address part of your concern, I looked it up through MLS and through Comerius County GIS since receiving the document that was provided. And, uh, there's no history of any file... And there's no history of any filings on those.
Any more questions for Sushil?
One more point of clarification. There, there was some comment about the half-acre lots. So during the rezoning, that was not, not a consideration. There, there was no conversation as part of the rezoning approval for a half-acre lot. So these were always medium-density, third-acre lots of 15,000 square foot, RM1. And on RV, those are 7,500 square foot lots. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. So I'll entertain a motion from council.
Want to make a real quick clarification here too, just for council. I mentioned earlier too, there's an obligation to consider this under two, two pieces here. I understand that there's going to be a desire by council members who voted against this in the past to vote against this preliminary plat approval. The only recommendation I make to the council as a whole is if this preliminary plat meets the standards of the UDO and the rezoning conditions and we deny it, then there is an opportunity for a legal claim from the developer against the town. And we would have to prove that it didn't meet the UDO or does not meet the rezoning conditions, which we would not be able to do. So a denial of this tonight will only cost the town legal time and money and efforts of fighting something that ultimately the court would come back and tell us we have to approve.
That's true.
We got a motion on the floor?
Second.
Properly second. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next up, consideration revised on the previous adopted gross land use density in Harrisburg area land use.
All right. Typically, when we schedule a public hearing, we don't go into a lot of detail on it. And I don't have a presentation and don't plan to, to go into too much detail on this tonight, but I wanted to give some clarity and some context to what the purpose of the public hearing is. So we have a public hearing planned to be scheduled during our November 12th council meeting. And the intent is to consider revising previously adopted gross land use densities in the halip. So our Harrisburg area land use plan or our halip contains a map, actually a, just a growth area map that identifies various categories of land uses and densities in those land uses throughout the town. So those land uses can be things like very low density, low density, medium density, high density, commercial, mixed use, et cetera. So when we created the halip, obviously it was a public process. We had many public meetings. There was a public hearing that was presented to the council. And so it was approved unanimously at that time. And as part of that halip, those land densities had caps on the number of units, residential units per acre that were allowed within each of those density classifications. Now that we've had an opportunity to use the halip since June, it was approved back in June of 2018, we've had several different development projects come through. And one of the things that staff has recognized is that the application of those density requirements aren't very reflective of the desires of some of the town council and some of the residents as we have worked through this. So as a result of that, staff is bringing forward revisions to those numbers. And so those will be considered and heard and given the public an opportunity for feedback in November. But what we are doing is we are adjusting those densities down. So for an example, our medium-density land use right now allows three to four units per acre to be built within that zoning classification or that, that land use classification. We would propose to lower that to two to three units per acre. An example for low density would be, low density now allows one to three units per acre. We would cap that at one to two units per acre. So this is a revision that we have proposed that we're going to send before our planning board for their recommendation as well. But it's just an attempt to better address the actual expectations that we have as a council and that we've heard from our residents moving forward. So just wanted to set the stage for that. If any residents or council members have questions or concerns, please let us know prior to November and we'll try to make sure we have all the answers and, and details available to you. But just really wanted to set what that was as we move forward. So information will come out in more detail when the planning board hears it later this month. And then of course, we'll have a public hearing in November.
So I entertain a motion to set a public hearing for November.
Motion.
Motion on the floor, properly second. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Instruction of change order. Consideration of change order, construction, I love the construction. That's you.
Good evening. So this one should be fairly easy. If you recall, throughout the final parts of the planning process with the Parks and Recreation project with Harrisburg Park Construction, before we went into approval, was that staff had applied for a PARTIF grant and that's a Park and Recreation Trust Fund. We were successful in obtaining that grant for $350,000. So tonight, we have a consideration of a change order to the construction contract for Harrisburg Park redevelopment project phase one and a project ordinance amendment as it relates to the PARTIF grant. Without getting too far into weeds about how the funds would be allocated, if you recall, as we went through the vetting process of all the amenities with our budget workshops where we presented the project, as well as we moved through the various approval processes, we did skin back on several park details like the playground area, the splash pad area, some of the other ancillary areas of the park in order to make that budget that we originally had of $10 million work. So the plans would be just to use this 350 to enhance and put back into those projects that we had originally kind of skinned back on to make the dollars work. So the original construction CMR contract was for $9,292,524. This would bring that to $9,642,524. So the emotion to approve a change order to the construction contract would be for that new amount of $9,642,524. The recommendation is to approve the attached change order and GMP as it relates to the PARTIF grant. That would bring the total project ordinance up to $10,350,000.
Is it possible to get the net difference of what, what it was to what it's going to be? Because we had a resident obviously ask that question. What are we getting to the splash pad that we weren't getting yesterday? What are we getting to? Anything that you've added, can you, can you itemize exactly what the change is so the 350 is at least accounted for at that level?
Yeah, we can kind of talk in, you know, just, I mean, in two minutes or three minutes here, just what we've kind of identified. So a lot of the areas are, so we can look at the splash pad, for instance. So we've looked at basically $50,000 that we had scaled back on originally. There were some shading structures around that splash pad. So we kind of had some wooden arbors and some other nicer seating areas. And when we had a scale back, that was an easy 50,000 that we pulled from. The wet deck as it relates to the splash pad, we had a few other like more ornate dump buckets and a couple of other things that was going to be above ground and more noticeable as that. With the funding getting tighter, we pulled another 50 from that. So that's about $100,000 right there. The playground was essentially in the same category as the areas outside the play structure itself. We were looking at shade arbors, a little bit nicer seating for parents as they were sitting there and those types of things. We had pulled that and just basically put benches in in place of those arbors and some of those other nicer elements. There is a landscape plan that we scaled back probably 30, 40% on that saved us probably $20,000 on and we reallocated back into the landscaping plan. The maintenance shop, while we're re-using the former Public Works facility, we did scale back quite a bit on the remakes of that building. We were going to just repaint it and kind of do a few basic upgrades to it. We cut probably about 50, 60, 80 grand out of that project. And we're repurposing those funds back into that to maybe asphalt the parking lot there, upfill that building with paint and maybe a new roof and then look at some new doors and some things that will actually improve that building as we reuse it. The remaining funds were going to be allocated into the amphitheater building. We removed the standing seam roof and put a multi-rib roof. So we were going to re-establish that roof. And the rest of it was going to kind of just tie into some extra irrigation and some other amenities that we just didn't have the funds to do. So all that's about 350.
Yeah. Mr. Patrick identified earlier, like what is it going for? It's a great question. And the allowances too are things that we have not yet to consider. So if you remember back to the CMR contract for the GMP, there were allowances that were set aside for playground, splash pass, splash pad amenities where we have not yet had an opportunity to go out with RFP for those, which is something that the Parks and Recreation staff has just started to do. So we've recently, correct me if I'm wrong, it's this week that we're pushing out RFPs for both the splash pad and the playground amenities. So we'll start to have better detail of what those actual costs are, but they've only been identified as allowances up until this point. So we're just putting those monies back into the, the whole GMP project so that we can take advantage of, as Daniel identified, those areas of improvement moving forward. But that's why you're not seeing specific allocations to specific things because up until this point, they've only been allowances.
And in that original proposal, we had a whole list of assumptions and exclusions that actually detailed all those costs and then what we actually excluded. So we've not actually put anything back into the project that hasn't been originally proposed from day one. So there's nothing there.
Do we have, excuse me, a not to exceed number?
Yes. Yes. So that's what our GMP is. Yes.
Right.
That's what my question was going to be. Are we, are we done or are we going to have to come back for more money?
No, no, we're done. This, the only reason for this is not really because we're coming to ask for more money. This was just the grant funding that we were fortunate enough to get post-approval of the project. So we just want the blessings to accept the money and to readjust the GMP to use those funds and to enhance and improve those parts of the project.
This also gives us a little bit added security because our current GMP has a contingency of just $100,000 in it, an owner's contingency of $100,000, which on a $10 million project is, is kind of light. But we expected that we would be able to manage the project as a result. So if we run into any expenses along the way that we're unaware of, well, excuse me, not that we're unaware of, but that we want to see changed, so things that we want to see identified or added to the project, the grant funds now give us a little bit greater flexibility to make those changes along the way. So it's, it's no new money out of our pocket. It's just reallocating those grant funds to the total project.
And for reference, how much are our change orders if, if we go to make change? Do we have a number on with that?
The change orders probably won't take place until later on in the project and we'll just kind of have to see as, as we go. Again, there's, those are going to be things that are going to be identified along the way that we would want to see improved on the project. There are obviously the construction manager change orders as well where they're part of their project, but that's on them to kind of cover, so.
Yeah, I just didn't know if they gave us a number ahead of time, what we could, you know, minimum change order fee would be $2,500.
Oh, there's no fees for any change orders. Let's see, there's no fee for the change orders. Just the cost of the project itself.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Go to council for consideration.
Motion to approve.
We got a motion on the floor?
Second.
Properly second. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you. Action items. I'm going to add one more to you.
Okay.
So in doing some research on the sustainability committee, there's several towns in, in near us that actually offer rain barrels, Concord being one of them. If we could reach out to Concord and maybe partner with them on how they're doing their rain barrels and maybe offer a similar situation here in Harrisburg. And they've got some literature on their, on their site as to what that means and obviously reducing the water going into the sewers and all that good stuff. So if we could also add that to, I know I said the electric bills for the two buildings and just from an analysis perspective.
So run over the action items real quick. Look into the rain barrel program. Communicate to homeowners affected by new sidewalks we intend to implement. Bring back a cost analysis on the electric bills for Fire Station 3 and Public Works Facilities. Look into the green promotion for businesses and restaurants.
And we got that. We're just, I just, yeah, we got that.
Looking to LED light poles in the transition for those. Look at a water bottle filling station in the parks.
We got that undercover. He's got that covered, so we're good there.
Sinage in the park, we'll address the letter missing there. And that's it.
Reach out to the sheriff and the DA.
Sheriff and DA, yeah.
I'd like to add one.
Sure.
Can we work with our fire marshal on a ordinance for safety on the...
Food trucks.
Food trucks.
Yes.
Look into that.
Yes, sir.
We have some problems. But we don't have any teeth around.
We'll get our fire staff to investigate what options are out there, create an ordinance and bring it back to council for consideration.
We do not have a closed session tonight unless somebody has something that I wasn't aware of. If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Got a motion on the floor? Properly second. All in favor say aye. Anybody opposed to leaving now?